Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the October 23rd, 2018 meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. May I get a motion to reopen the meeting and to reopen the business meeting?
I move to open.
Commissioner Hassan, second. Commissioner Berkeley, all those in favor? My mic is on, sorry. Okay, I have Commissioner Lynn, McFadden, Hassan, Bon-Dima, Chinya Reed, Frank Berkeley, and Richardson. I believe that is nine to zero, thank you. At this time, we will please stand for the posting of the colors being presented by the Forest Park High School JROTC.
Cover doors. Attention. Carry your coats. Forward march. Coats, fold. Left, raise.
Ma'am, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Cory Butts of Forest Park Senior High School, Army JROTC, requesting to post the colors.
Permission granted.
Thank you, ma'am.
Coats reverse, march. Coats, fold. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Coats, post.
Ready, go.
I would like to thank those students from Forest Park High School. They were Cadet Cory Butts, Cadet Ayana Martin, Cadet Amori Butler, Cadet Jayla Jones, Cadet Anana Sheen, and the alternate was Cadet Jason McGallister. Again, thank you all. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Bon-Dima to lead us in a moment of silence.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Chinya. We would like to take the time to recognize the passing of a city school, of city school employees and students. Crystal Richards, who served in city schools for almost 32 years at Coldstream Park Elementary School. Ms. Richards began her career with city schools as an assistant instructional at Coldstream Park Elementary in October of 1986. In August of 2005, Ms. Richards became a paraeducator and later assumed the paraeducator pre-K position in 2017. She unfortunately departed on Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and schools' community. Barbara Lightner, who served in city schools for almost 45 years. Ms. Lightner spent her entire career with city schools at Armstead Gardens Elementary Middle School. She began her career in, as instructional assistant in November 1973. Ms. Lightner later assumed assignments as a paraeducator in 2005, and most recently as a paraeducator pre-K. Ms. Lightner unfortunately departed on Wednesday, October 10th, 2018, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and school, and city schools' community. Nakali Frye Stevens, I hope I'm pronouncing it properly, was just starting first grade at Matthew A. Hinson Elementary School. His family remembers him as an exceptional, unique, one-of-a-kind individual who unfortunately left us before his time. He will forever remain in our hearts as the angelic champion he was. Nakali's teacher remembers him as sweet and eager to learn. I was reading Thomas and the Library Lady in wit and wisdom, and he really enjoyed hearing the words translated in Spanish. He was participating and happy. Nakali will be greatly missed by his family and friends. Our entire school community sends our condolences to his family. And Andrew Allen, known to all as Drew, was a new 10th grader at the Achievement Academy. In his first month with us, he displayed the type of effort and dedication necessary to be successful at our school. He was charismatic and adored by his peers and our staff. He will be greatly missed by the entire school community. Jarrell Mitchell, a first grader at Kip Harmony Academy, was an energetic, enthusiastic Kipster. He died Saturday, September 29th, in an accident. Although he was new to our school, this year he quickly made friends. He left his mark on so many teammates and staff members. All of his classmates claimed him as his best friend because that is how he made people feel. Kip was excited for Jarrell to run for student government positions this fall as he was a witty, natural leader. He loved to laugh, use computers, take pictures, and play football. He was extremely athletic and talked often, often about the after-school sports clubs he intended on joining. He loved math, and he liked to figure out word problems. His memory continues on with his mother, father, and brother, as well as all the Kipsters, big and small, at Kip Harmony Academy. His last Friday at school, his class tended our school garden, planting flowers for the spring. Kip looks forward to dedicating the flower box he and his teammates attended in memorial for Jarrell this upcoming spring, an idea brought forward by his classmates. The school would like to thank the district, our board, and the community at Kip for coming together to support our students, staff, and Jarrell's family. Jarrell will be forever missed. Could we please have a moment of silence?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bon-Dima. At this time, I would like a motion for the approval of the prior open session minutes. Seated by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner Berkeley. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, let's see. Okay, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Lynn, McFadden, Hassan. I haven't done this, so you have to get, bear with me for a minute, Bon-Dima. Yes, Chinya Reed, Frank Berkeley, and Richardson. And now I ask for a motion for the approval of the closed session summaries.
Still move?
Commissioner Bon-Dima, seconded by Commissioner Hassan. All those in favor? Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bon-Dima, Chinya. Commissioner Reed, you're gonna, okay, Reed, Frank, Berkeley, and Richardson. I think that's eight to zero, thank you. We will now have some board committee reports. Is there a report for the operations committee?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. The operation meeting was on October 16th, 2018, and it was quite a lively discussion. We talked about food and nutrition services, transportation update, budget update, and FY18 financial summary. I'm not going to be long saying this, but it was a really, really good meeting. The one, the meeting that's, well, we talked about transportation and scheduling, and pickups and training, and certifications, and anything related to transportation at the school system. But what I want to put emphasis on is how exciting it was to hear the presentation of food and nutrition. And I think some of our committee members will also say that if anybody was looking at the meeting that day at 10 o'clock, you would be real excited to see how that department laid out all the information related to how we feed our children. And what was really interesting, they took great pictures that, from different schools, of the meals, and they did it in color. I was so excited to see how well we're feeding our kids breakfast, lunch, and in many cases, dinner and after-school, for after-school programs. It was so exciting to see the kids enjoying it, and it was such a healthy meal. And I think that if you, for the people in the public who are looking at our committee meetings, I highly recommend that you go back and look at those pictures where parents can see how well we're doing with our children. And it's so healthy. And one of the things I was real concerned with, most of you, those of you who were in school many, many years ago, how they encouraged us to eat fruit, and they would put apples on the plate, and then you see all the apples in the trash can. Where now, when you go, when the children eat, they have all the fruits laid out, and the students who would like to eat certain foods can come, fruits, they can come up and pick it up. But it's really interesting, they showed all of the help and the way that they scheduled the services and the employees who were there. It was very intense, and I think that is something that would stay behind with all of us. And if you can get an opportunity, please go back and review that show when you're, you know, look at the channel. I think it's '77. But anyway, so we also did our procurement that day, and that went very well. Our next meeting will be November 20th, 2018. It will be in this room, and we will be doing our budget update, talent, and organization development.
Thank you. I think I'm ready to go get a school lunch, sounds good. The next report is our policy committee.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We met also on the 16th, and the policy committee discussed policy EEA, the transportation policy. It's an interesting policy in that it intersects with federal law, state law, as well as the need to, the very real need to be sure we can move our students around the city effectively and efficiently. So I would strongly suggest if the public is interested to weigh in during public comment on that policy. A couple of pieces, the committee asked for some research to be done in on alternative possibilities for moving kids, especially our kids that go curb to curb, or, sorry, door to door, for homelessness needs. So right now, we're spending, sending them in cabs to see what we can do about creating a bigger block to help reduce some of the overhead costs, and also ensure that kids can go back to their home schools, or the school they were enrolled in when they became homeless. Our next policy meeting will be on November 20th as well, where we'll discuss the number of school days and years, or school days per year and holidays, attendance policy, and an update on the equity policy following our public forum that took place this summer.
Thank you. And the last report, the teaching and learning committee.
Have we met since that last meeting? I know we meet next on November 5th at 3:30. We haven't met since the last meeting.
All right, thank you.
Since our last board meeting.
And just a reminder to everyone that all of these committee meetings are open to the public, and so you are invited to attend. Please, if you can't attend in person and would like to watch them, you can also do that, but we do encourage you to come to those meetings. I'm going to be giving a report for our board chair, and I'd like you all to please keep her in your thoughts. She had a fall today, and we've sent her off to the clinic to be certain that everything is okay. Otherwise, you would be seeing Commissioner Krishani. But she would like to, first of all, thank everyone for attending the forum that we had a couple of weeks ago on school police and the use of firearms. It was a well-attended forum. I think it was very informative. We heard lots of opinions. The next step for us will be actually on December 13th, and that's when we'll be having our legislative platform forum. That will be a time where we're going to be inviting you to come to talk with us, to either suggest a possibility of legislation that we may either propose or support for the upcoming General Assembly. We will then be voting on that platform in January. So I'm pretty sure that probably some of the discussion from that police, school police forum will come up on that date. So please keep that in your calendar, December 13th. Also want to remind you that we will be having a budget forum on November 1st. For several years, we have invited the public to come to budget forums. They've been pretty late, and we've heard folks say that it really would be nice for us to begin this process a little sooner. So that's what we're trying for this year. On November 1st, the purpose of that forum will be to really lay out the process of budget development so that you can understand how we develop both the central office budget as well as the beginnings of the process and the directives that are given for schools to develop their budgets. We will also discuss how you, as parent and community members, can be personally involved in that process at your schools. And so we hope that you will come. Remember, everything that we do around that development of our budget, we want to do it within the lens of supporting our blueprint. And so we look forward to having you join us November 1st for the budget forum. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the personnel and the quasi-judicial matters for the board. Commissioner Bon-Dima, and seconded by Commissioner Hassan. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bon-Dima, Chinya, Reed, Frank, Berkeley, and Richardson. Those are all passed, so I will turn this over to Madam CEO.
Thank you, Commissioner Chinya. Good evening, everyone. I am very pleased to announce tonight that Dorothy I. Height Elementary has been selected to receive a design award from the Baltimore chapter of the American Institute of Architects. That's AIA, which is like the foremost architectural professional group within that field. Last Friday, the school was given the Social Equity Design Award, which recognizes a project that brings good design to underserved communities and actively engages the community in the design process. Congratulations to the 21st Century Design Team and the architectural firm of Cho Ben Holback for this wonderful accomplishment. Special recognition goes to Nicole Price, Director of Public Relations for the 21st Century School Buildings Plan, and the point person for our outreach efforts to the school communities. Nicole is currently on a well-deserved vacation, but I can't overemphasize enough just the phenomenal job that both she and the team have done, really working with communities, listening, incorporating their feedback into the new school buildings that now so many of our young people have the advantage of benefiting from and enjoying. So again, a big thank you, and more than anything else, this really is about the equity for families in Baltimore, all families in Baltimore, to have access to quality 21st century school buildings that reflect their desires and dreams for their children. So thank you very much. Congratulations to everyone involved for a job well done. Next, last year, I had the honor of finding a program at my daughter's school, my twin daughters, that's daughters with an apostrophe at the end of it, so my twin-daughter school, to help with an event, and it was called Hour, an Hour of Code. I spent, I had a chance at that time to speak with another Tunbridge parent, Maruna Burke, about how engaged the kids were. And you walked around, and literally the whole school was engaged in coding activities and technology activities. And one of the things that I said and had no way of knowing what would grow out of that was, wow, what an amazing event. It would be fabulous to have this across our city. And I've got to tell you, if just about everything I suggested took root as quickly as this did, we would be so much further down the road in a number of areas. And so from that brief exchange, Maruna reached out to Diane Conley from Code in the Schools, and the two of them have harnessed the power of the business community, local and state government, colleges, and district staff to organize and launch the district's first-ever district-wide Hour of Code. More than 50 schools have opted in for this event, and Maruna and Diane recruited more than 500 volunteers to support the program in schools. Now you know what I mean when I said if this happened as magically for everything that I just happened to do, how wonderful life would be. I'm very excited about this opportunity for our students, and I am very pleased to welcome Maruna Burke and Diane Conley to tell us more about the district-wide Hour of Code.
Yeah. Just make sure the mic is on. Just press the, there you go. Thanks. So thank you, commissioners, and Dr. Santelisis for having us. I am not Maruna Burke. I'm Gretchen LaGrande. I'm the Executive Director of Code in the Schools.
But I am Diane Conley.
Maruna is on our Board of Directors, but she could not be here tonight. She sends her regrets. So we're super excited just to talk to you guys for a little bit about, very quick few minutes, about the Hour of Code initiative. This is a global initiative, so people are doing an Hour of Code around the world during Computer Science Education Week, which happens December 3rd through the 10th. And just to familiarize you a little bit with Code in the Schools, we are a nonprofit. We're, our office is about a block down the street, and we advocate for computer science education. We work directly with city schools, so we are in 13 schools during the school day. We have a full-time computer science teacher who's teaching computer science, and through that, we reach about 7,000 Baltimore City school students every year who have access to that computer science education. Through the Hour of Code initiative, with the 50 schools that have signed up so far, and the volunteers we're recruiting, we're going to be able to give exposure to what computer programming and computer science is to many, many more students. So we're thrilled for the opportunity. We are working with Stacy Davis and Sherry Harris-Gibbs from the Office of Instructional Technology, and then our friends in CTE as well, who are assisting in this effort. Yep, and I mentioned that, it's December 3rd through 7th. This is just a fantastic opportunity. I don't know how many of you are familiar with what computer programming or coding, computer science is, but it really is the new literacy for this, for the 21st century. So we feel it's just a matter of equity that Baltimore City students have the same access to this type of education as many of their peers in more affluent school districts or in private schools. So this, we're really excited to have this opportunity to give this exposure and awareness, both to the students and their families, and also to the school administrators who we'll be working with on this effort so that they know what's out there for their students. I'm going to turn it over to Diane to talk about some of the logistics.
Yeah, so I am our Chief Operating Officer at Code in the Schools. When Maruna originally approached us about this idea, we were really excited because we already, am I actually speaking into the microphone? Are already very involved with Hour of Code. It's a global effort. Computer Science Education Week happens every year. Two years ago, we did a project with some of the city council folks to get them involved and just help people understand that coding isn't rocket science. So we're thrilled that so many schools have opted in, and we're thrilled that we've been able to recruit so many volunteers from local industry and government agencies. It's a great way for us to get people into schools to help who might not otherwise have an opportunity to be in a city school during the school day. And really exciting to expose how wonderful what happens in the schools can be. So we're still recruiting volunteers. If anyone would like to volunteer, it's, it requires no technology experience. We're going to be doing a little bit of training for everyone, and you can sign up to volunteer at codetheschools.org on our website, and we'll be thrilled to fill you in after the event. I think Dr. Santelisis has agreed to participate as a...
I agree to so much that I can't remember that I've agreed to.
And we're happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
We met, right?
We have.
We did. I remember when we met, I asked you what were some of the barriers to sort of going to scale on this, and I've noticed on your website, there are states that have changed policies. So two questions. One is what are some of, what have some of the states done to allow this to occur on a larger scale? And secondly, I think you mentioned the difficulty in getting computer science teachers certified, or finding them and getting them certified as an obstacle to teaching coding in schools. Could you just quickly touch on those two?
I'm so glad you asked. This is my favorite topic. Yes, in fact, we, this past legislative session did a lot of advocacy work with our state legislators here in Maryland, and we were able to have a bill that was passed, which is, which is going to mandate that computer science be available in every Maryland high school in the year 2021, school year. No, 21, yes, 2021, that's right. So that's coming, and that certainly helps. Although, you know, for school districts like ours where there's limitations around equipment and things like that, I think there was some hesitation, but it's a really, really great, it's a really, really great bill. We're really happy about it, and we would like to see more of that because that's, it's the best way to make sure that everybody has equitable access to it. There are limitations around just the number of computers that a school might have and the availability to schedule classes around those, but there's also a lot that can be done even offline, like not using computers, just around the logic and problem-solving skills that are required. So, you know, all together, it's a good effort, and we're continuing that advocacy work. Yeah, so we also do professional development for teachers statewide. We have been working with a lot of Baltimore City teachers here. We run a professional learning community that meets monthly. The certification question is still an issue that people are struggling with. There's just not a lot of pre-service computer science teacher, there just aren't that many programs, but there's ways around that as well.
I'd say that is actually exactly why we should be teaching more computer science. There's really a huge shortage of people who have computer science experience across our economy in general, and, you know, we're, we're suffering in terms of teacher certification, but every industry is suffering as well. So from a workforce development standpoint in the state, it's important that we try to expand our access.
Thank you both.
Thank you, thanks.
Very excited, and yes, I will be there.
We hope to see you all there.
Very good. Alrighty, and then finally, before I invite Chief Grant Skinner up for tonight's pep, I do want to say that we are very proud, and when I say we, both as CEO and staff as well as the board, are very excited to be the host city for this year's Council of Great City Schools. We will be really all hands on deck, both with regards to the board and staff, in greeting folks from large urban school districts across the country. This is their opportunity to see all that is happening and moving in Baltimore City, and also gives us the chance to be able to learn and share, and like I usually say, to fellowship with one another. to fellowship with one another, really around what it means to be serving some of the most vulnerable, but some of the most talented and gifted young people that our nation has. And so, we are very excited for this opportunity. We welcome folks to come down and check things out. It's running from October 24th to 28th. And our main hotel is the Marriott, correct? The Marriott Waterfront, thank you, is the host hotel. So, we welcome everyone out. And again, we are very proud to be hosting this event. The mayor will be there. We'll have a number of elected officials who will be there as well. So, we certainly want to invite parents, teachers, the community out to also just at least see some of what's going on, even if you don't register for the full conference. Okay? And without further ado, I will invite Chief Grant Skinner for this evening's PEP agenda before I turn it back over to Commissioner Chinia.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Dr. Santalisis. We have two appointments this evening. First, Amy Puffenbarger, currently IEP Team Associate at Calverton Elementary Middle School, is appointed Educational Specialist II for OSTEMIC compliance investigations, effective October 29th. And second, our second person, I believe, is here. Vilma Bethia, currently Educational Associate at the Mount Washington School, is also appointed Educational Specialist II for OSTEMIC compliance investigations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Chief Grant Skinner. And back to you, Commissioner Chinia.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to do a review for Board members of the items that are on the consent agenda. And we're not going to be voting at this time, but just let me know if there's anything that you would like to be pulled. So, I'm going to start with item 8.01, contract approval. Let's see. 11.01, SAS Institute Incorporated. 12.01, Femdel LLC. 13.01, the Children's Guild and Wood Lawn Motor Coach. 13.02, Operational Health Center Southwest. 13.03, Bus Parts Warehouse. Okay, here are none. We will come back to those to vote later. If there are any changes after the public comment, then we will do that at that time. So, let's see. I'm sorry, I'm catching up here again. Time, I think, for our public comment. And we start with the special recognition group. So, the first one is Parent Community Advisory Board, PCAB. We have representatives from PCAB.
We're a little ahead of schedule, actually. So, we haven't got the rest of the public comment list down yet.
Okay.
So, do we need to take a break?
We usually get about 5:45 to about a couple minutes.
So, you should maybe move into another area, come back?
We could move into information and discussion.
Okay, so we will do that. Thank you very much. For those of you who don't understand our conversation, we don't, the list usually comes down a little bit later, so we're going to give people time. So, we'll move into the information and discussion. And the first on our list is Policy ILA, Test Integrity First Reader. Down to information, coming back.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Teresa Jones. I serve as our Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer.
My name is Daryl Smith. I'm a Test Integrity Specialist.
Carol Wilson, Directive of Assessment.
This afternoon, we'd like to bring forward a first reader for our Test Integrity Policy. There are a couple of things I'd just like to point out before we get started. First and foremost, we really appreciated the conversation with the Policy Committee where we first introduced this policy. There were a couple of areas of feedback that we are going to touch on this evening. But before we get into those specific areas of feedback, I'm going to ask the team to walk you through the specifics that were outlined in the revisions, both for the policy and the accompanying regs. Just for grounding purposes, we did just want to remind everyone that the reason that this is so critically important is, of course, we rely on the integrity of our data to get a good understanding around how our students are performing, and also to help inform how the district can make additional steps and actions to attain the student outcomes that we're so fervently focusing on delivering. So, as we go through this evening, again, we're going to start, first and foremost, with an overview. We're going to walk through the pieces pretty quickly, mostly because we know folks have had an opportunity to review the actual documents. And then also, we'll speak to the timeline as we work towards our second reader in early January.
Okay. First of all, the rationale for the revision of our policy is threefold. One, our Test Integrity Policy will reflect the changes in the law that took effect on July 1st, 2018, in the state law. The revisions also reflect a decrease in paper-based testing and an increase of online testing. And third, the experience of the Office of Achievement and Accountability in actually implementing this policy since its inception in 2013. Our community stakeholders, we have a list of our community stakeholders there. We haven't received any substantive feedback as of yet. We have had a few questions that we're going to reach out to the organization to clarify those questions, to see if there's any feedback in light of that. Next thing is that proposed changes, the highlights to our changes. I know that you have all of the changes in our red line copy. But first of all, the first thing that we proposed in ILA, which is the actual policy itself, is the removal of the requirement that the district engage in annual growth analysis. We do rely on the fact that MSDE, Maryland State Department of Education, actually performs an annual analysis. But we also will reach out to MSDE and to legal department to just ensure that we're moving in the right direction with removing that from our policy itself. We also revised the definition of test examiner to reflect the change in the law. Our ILAR, which deals with test administration training. We have replaced the requirement that all principals attend all mandatory training, and we now require them to complete a mandatory test integrity training annually. For ILARB, which deals with test administration, we have revised the policy to include or reflect the changes that had been made in the park test administration policy, that test examiners are able to use cell phones in cases of emergency. And we have found through practical necessity that that is a good revision. We also updated the list of secured test materials just to reflect some of the online testing. And ILARC, which deals with our monitoring, we just clarified the fact that monitoring, our test monitoring, which is done by external monitors, will be done in accordance with our annual test monitoring plan, which is adopted annually by OAA. And last but not least, ILARD, which is test investigations, we just made the revision to reflect our position, title change, not actually change, but to reflect the title reference position from City Schools' Coordinated Assessments and Training to our Directive of Student Assessment. And the last thing, we have changed the requirement that we notify charter school operators to reflect that we have an expansion of schools with operators. And so, with those schools or operators, we're going to notify them also.
Thank you, Daryl. In terms of the main area that we wanted to bring forward to make sure folks were aware that we're still working towards, is really clarifying the expectations related to the locally mandated assessments. And while the integrity statement has all along stated inclusion of both state and locally mandated assessments, there has been a reality around how we have differentiated support between the two different types of assessments. And so, as we had a conversation with the Policy Committee, it was brought to our attention that since the original adoption of this policy, there have actually been one, if not more, actual assessments identified via board policy as now being requirements for students. So, what we wanted to do is to take a step back, take a closer look at those assessments, how those are administered, and review whether or not the regulations needed to be updated to reflect the level of support required to ensure the integrity of those assessments. So, what we have first on this slide is a list of those policy references and the assessments that were identified. The first one was the fitness assessment. And this was brought to our attention by Commissioner James Hassan as she reflected back on the wellness policy and the fact that this is now called out as a required assessment for all of our students and is actually related to a portion of their grade and how that is calculated. We also were taking a look at the promotion, acceleration, and retention policy, and noting that there are some assessments that we use specifically for that purpose, that help us identify students that are then given the opportunity to accelerate, and that that's handled through our Gifted and Learning Office. And then also, as relates to early admissions, there's a policy that relates to both early admissions for kindergarten and first grade, both of which also make reference to an assessment that would be used to make the determination as to whether or not that early admission would be granted. And then last but not least, related to the school choice process, recognizing that we also have an assessment option available for those students that do not participate in the state mandated assessments, and that that assessment is administered by the Office of Achievement and Accountability. We also took an additional step to say, well, not only do we have assessments that are policy dictated, but we also have a number that are reflected in the district's assessment strategy. And we looked specifically at those that were being implemented to support the formative uses across the board. And so, what this reflects here is just the list of those additional assessments that were determined through an overall review of the various needs, both of our teaching and learning organization, in order to make sure that we are getting adequate data to understand how students are performing, to determine whether or not we are, again, adjusting instruction in order to meet their needs appropriately. And then also, there are some assessments that are tied to specific areas, such as for English proficiency, ensuring that we understand how students are performing there. That's determined both for their diagnostic determinations as well as their placement levels. And so, those are listed here, again, just to make sure that we are clear that those are also being required by the district. And as it relates to that, you'll note that there are some comments. We have one assessment that is used specifically for the identification of gifted and talented students, and that we also make reference to the fact that we do still have middle-of-course and end-of-course exams, which oftentimes are factored into grade calculations. And so, that those also have high integrity expectations associated with them. So, again, we put forward this list, number one, to circle back and provide full transparency around where we are in terms of mandated assessments that should be reviewed as it relates to integrity, and then ensuring that as we move forward to second reader, we will take a second pass through to see, are there any additional adjustments to be made that, again, clarifies how the district's ensuring integrity for these assessments as well as the state assessments. As it relates to our next steps, we are continuing to gather stakeholder feedback. As Daryl mentioned earlier, thus far, it's really been more a matter of clarification, but we want to make sure that we've addressed fully any additional feedback that's outstanding. And then, as mentioned, really taking a closer look at the locally mandated assessments to ensure just that the language that's in the regulations adequately reflects the actions taken to ensure integrity. As our timeline is concerned, we're working towards second reader as January 8th is our next date before the Board. This time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Berkeley? Yes, thank you very much for this. My question is, I think some of the public feedback that we've gotten about testing, one of the questions that is raised is how much time, how much of a student's time is spent being tested as opposed to learning and so on? And I don't know how easy that would be to address, but, and maybe you've already answered it. I mean, you haven't, I don't think, tonight, but maybe you have it at an earlier time, and I'm forgetting. But I don't know if we have those kinds of numbers, but it might be interesting to look at that.
Sure. So, two things. Yes, as far as the proposals in terms of the assessment strategy, that information was shared publicly previously. This year was the first time we sort of spoke to it as a multi-year strategy. So, we talked about over the course of the three years, how we are continuing to make adjustments to the assessment plan based on what we're learning, particularly as we introduce new curriculum. So, for example, with WIT and Wisdom, it sort of has opened the door around how are we thinking about our ELA assessments? We now have knowledge, having used the ANET assessment that's in support of our Eureka curriculum, et cetera. So, each time we make these new introductions, it gives us another opportunity to reflect upon what we're doing, to ensure that we don't have redundancy as relates to the assessments that we're using. We've also established the District Committee on Assessments, which is also taking a look at more broadly, how well we're articulating the purpose of assessments, how the seat times reflect those priorities, so on and so forth. So, if you actually do take a look at our seat times over the course of the last three years, we've made substantial adjustments. They vary a bit by grade, of course, but it has been in reflection of what we're actually doing and what we're using real time in schools, as well as what we're providing to families to help them better understand how their students are performing. As it relates to policy, however, there is no seat time-related component that would pertain to this specific policy as it is currently scoped.
One follow-up question. Do we, do we reach out to teachers? Do you do this on a basis and have teachers come back and give you feedback on how they think these things are going and so on?
We do. We have various feedback mechanisms that include not just teachers, but parents, students, et cetera, that we get learning throughout the course of the school year. One of the things, as I mentioned before, with the District Committee on Assessments, that's a relatively new mechanism for us to be able to get representation across various stakeholder groups. There are parent representatives as well as teachers and other stakeholders that are participants on that particular group. And that group will be also bringing forward various recommendations around how we, again, address those key issues around articulating the purpose of assessments, how we are using those assessment data, and ensuring that we're in compliance with the law as it relates to those expectations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hassan?
So, I just want to thank your team. As we look at student wholeness being one of our three big pillars, the work you've done to add in the complete picture of assessments really shows and illustrates how we are working, whether it's WITA, gifted and talented, the fitness assessments, how we're working to address the needs of the whole child. So, really appreciate you presenting the full picture on that one.
Thank you.
There are no other questions. Thank you. And we know that the second reader will be coming up, you said, in January.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To allow time, I think, so that we can begin public comment at 6:00, we're going to do one other of the information items, and that will be Policy BBB, Board Membership Appointment. And this is another first reader.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Commissioner Chinia stated, this is Policy BBB, Board Membership Appointment. So, just a little background on the B series of our policies. Section B contains policies, regulations, exhibits on the school board operations, including how is appointed or elected, how it's organized, how it conducts meetings, and how the board operates. This Policy BBB is a revision of our current policy to align it with state law. In 2017, House Bill 0562 was passed by the General Assembly, repealing the governor's role in making appointments to the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. And as you can see, the current policy is that school board members will jointly be appointed by the governor and mayor. But in alignment with state law, the new policy states that only the mayor shall appoint members of the school board from a list of qualified individuals. And those qualified individuals are determined by the Baltimore City Public School Board Community Panel. And this is a listing of the panel, the following, just to note that the following groups may be represented on this panel. And additionally, with feedback from the Policy Committee, I spoke with the mayor's office, and they're okay with this policy. Okay? That's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Well, I keep looking at time. I don't know. Could we move to one more, which is the Operations Winter Preparedness? I'm still not quite at the magic hour. Time, is anyone down? Are we okay then? Are we okay then? Okay, we will do the recognized groups. Thank you. This is, this is a, a team effort tonight. So now I'm going to go back and let's start with the Parent Community Advisory Board. Do we have representatives from P-CAB? Thank you.
Long, long day. So, right now, just giving folks an update. So we had some folks from P-CAB who were supposed to be up here today that didn't get a chance to come for other reasons, just so folks are aware, so that, because I know normally there's a couple of us that come up. But in terms of report backs, just to have some clear items, one is that we've been working on getting the committees up and running. So a lot of that has been building infrastructure, identifying people to lead those teams amongst our own teams, and really dividing up the work that we'll be doing with the community engagement team, as well as the policy teams and the rest of them. All of them have met, with the exception of engagement, which we should be meeting within the next two weeks, so we'll have a full report out of what the committees are doing by the top of the month. As well as just a reminder to folks that the next P-CAB meeting is 6:30 this Thursday in this room, so that people can attend. The agenda will go out, we'll be having two to three presenters, and we'll know who the final folks on the presenters list are by tomorrow. So that'll all be up on the P-CAB Facebook page, so if you haven't been to the page, you can go like it and get a calendar invite for Thursday. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Hassan?
Many of us have reached out individually, but I'd just like to, through you, express our collective positive thoughts to Treasure Guy and her family and what they're dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next group is the Baltimore Teachers Union. I see Mr. Ross, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Substitute President.
That's a new one. Thanks.
Madam CEO and distinguished commissioners. I give you that title because you found a substitute, and we have sometimes a hard time finding substitutes in our schools. And that's all I'm going to say about that. It's just a fact of life. So I'm here for a couple of reasons, and then when I sit here and I hear certain comments, other things come into my mind, and all of which is pretty good, so. First, I want to thank the board and the staff here for your support with our recent Quest Conference, which was last Friday. Some of you were present. I'm not going to name names, but I'm looking at some of you who were present. That's one thing. Second is question one on the ballot coming up, I believe, is the Kerwin Commission lockbox. And we're looking forward to your support, which I think is preaching to the choir, but I was told to bring that up. Third, this is on my own. Turnbridge is a great school. It's one, we have each field rep, my, by the way, my name's Neil Ross, and I work for the Baltimore Teachers Union. Most of you I know don't know me, but that's who I am. We have a lot of teachers that send their children there. I didn't know the CEO did, so I'm going to have to go there more often.
Because my kids are the ones that are acting up, Neil.
You just call me, I'll take care of it. So, but it is, it is one, I have about 25 schools, we each have a kind of a territory, and I, everybody has their favorites, and Turnbridge is one of them. It's not the only one. But, so you picked a good school to send your twins, did I hear? Well, congratulations. That would really conclude my report unless something comes to my head before I stand up. And if you don't ask any questions, nothing else will come into my head. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions now? You don't have any questions. She has a question. Thanks.
Okay. I can tell you that I think the choir up here is all tuned up, so we'll be ready for Election Day. You don't have to worry. Thank you.
I figured.
Thank you. And I would also like to just congratulate the BTU also on, I wasn't able to attend this year, but I tried to, and the Quest Conference is one of the best ones that I can say that I have attended. So thank you for the work that you do to be certain that our teachers really continue to improve in their skills and have the opportunity to see and work with folks from education field all over the country. So thank you again. Next, we have Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, C-CAC. Welcome.
Dr. Santalisa and the Board of Commissioners, glad to see you all this evening. Two things before I go into my agenda. I want to thank Mrs. Smith and his team for reaching out to us about the tests and the training and all that information. I sent my information early, but some technological glitch happened, they didn't receive it, so I resent it. I've talked to teachers and I've phoned the students to get feedback, so my recommendations and questions has been submitted. The other thing I'm going to talk about is the Transportation Committee, continue to support and encourage them and work well with them, that the students and the parents will be satisfied with what is going on with the transportation. So I gave them some feedback as well, and they're moving forward. Now I'd like to talk about our next meeting, oh, thank Dr. Santalisa for coming to our October meeting, it was greatly appreciated. Thank you for all you do for special education, we do appreciate you. Our next meeting will be November the 12th. We have three presenters, one is Joseph Anastasio, Jeff Wyatt and his transition team, and we also have a real treat. We have an art teacher from George WF McMickin coming to do a presentation with the parents just to engage them and the students together that night, and it's called "We Are So Thankful: There's A Lot To Find Wrong But It Is Something To Find Good." So we're excited about that meeting, it's November the 12th here in this boardroom from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. If any of you all can come, I would greatly appreciate it, and also reach out to some children that's receiving specialized services that you might know, that I have not reached at at this point. Please allow them to know to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that event that you're planning, that sounds wonderful. Thank you. Now I have others, I have other organizations listed, and I just, I need to do a check. Should I be calling all of these?
No, only the ones with named representatives, so it's just those three.
Thank you. So I'm going to move to the second part of our public comment, and the first person who has signed up is Kathleen Sayers.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Associated Student Congress is here to speak on. I know they haven't been here in a while, but they are here, I just didn't want to make sure we weren't skipping over. They're recognized group.
That's what I was just asking. Okay, sorry. Ms. Sayers, can you hang on, Ms. Sayers? No, I'm sorry. Associated Student Congress. See, there's a rep here. Thank you.
My name is Rokelga Gaspie, I am a senior at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute, and this year I'm serving as the president of the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City. And so tonight, I really just want to give the board an update as to what we've been doing. So regarding ASCBC, I'd like to report that our membership has increased so far in the year, our school membership. Some important events that are coming up in our calendar are a trip to Annapolis, during which we hope to speak to delegates to increase the funding for Baltimore City schools through Kerwin Commissions. And other important events involve our general assemblies, which will be occurring on November 8th, and sometime in February as well. Some initiatives that we hope to uptake this year, we are planning to partner up with the National Aquarium and/or Blue Water Baltimore in an attempt to have community, a community organization outreach where our students will be able to better the environment of Baltimore City. We hope to run an initiative called Box Tops for Baltimore, a collection competition of box tops between our member schools to raise money for these schools. This year, we have and will be continuing to advocate for full voting rights for our student member on the board, and as part of our efforts to increase youth advocacy and registration, and voter registration, we are planning a party at the polls on November 6th, which is an event with Baltimore Votes, which hosts a community event at a polling location where we hope to make voting a more approachable event to members of the community. And lastly, as we do every year, we are searching for grants to supplement our budget. One of such grants is the Youth as Resources Grant. And regarding our involvement with MASCE, the Maryland Association of Student Councils, we will be attending their Fall Leadership Conference on November 17th, their Legislative Session on February 9th, their Executive Board Meeting, which we will be hosting here in Baltimore on February 23rd, and the convention on March between the 27th and the 29th. And that is it.
Thank you, Tori. That was great. I just wanted to add on that the Executive Board Meeting that we will be hosting regarding the Maryland Association of Student Councils, Baltimore City has not held in abundance of years, so we are really happy that we are eligible to host this and we're eligible to get ASCBC back on the map with AMASCE. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner McFen? Hold on.
Thanks for coming tonight. How many schools do we have as members of ASCBC currently?
I personally am not too sure about that number. I know that that's something our advisor has, but we had previously been speaking about it at our meeting upstairs, and we were just discussing that so far in the year, we have an increase of member schools.
And what, what is your recruitment strategy for making sure that we have more schools a part of the Associated Student Congress?
Sure. So what we typically do is we have a list of the schools in Baltimore City, the high schools and middle schools, and we have contact informations of those principals. And what we do is we divide that amongst our board members, and we contact them personally through phone calls and through emails. And should we be successful in reaching those principals, we ask for the contact information of their SGA advisors, should they have any or any interested teachers who would be, or any teachers who are interested in running a student government association within that school. We also typically attend the High School Choice Fair, as we've done every year, and that's where we really meet face-to-face with different school representatives, and that's usually how we recruit schools for the coming year and for the current year.
Cool. I would recommend, I don't know if you all are doing it already, but partnering with the city schools media team to maybe promote ASCBC and to get more of the word out about the great things that you're talking about that you're doing tonight. I think that's important. And it mobilizes the community, too, to be engaged in, in our student group.
Definitely, thank you.
Commissioner Hassan?
So, and just one further, if there's young people or teachers who support young people that are out there, and there's not a student representative from your high school, encouraging them to go to your principal and look for this email or request this email, reach out through you, or if you could tell us what your advisor's name is, so that's on the record so they could reach out to that person as well.
That would be Mr. Sean Bailey.
Okay. And I'm going to also put a plug into parents, that if you, if you are aware that your children's school does not have Student Government Association, perhaps you can be the person, the catalyst to help get that going, because it's never too early for us to really understand what it means to be a good citizen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, Ms. Sayers, I'm back. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Sayers, and this is Katie Fink, and we are both kindergarten teachers in the city. This is my 14th year teaching kindergarten, eight of those years in the city. I have degrees from the University of Maryland in Early Childhood Education and a master's in Urban and Minority Education. My master's study is focused on high-quality literacy instruction for African-American children, as it was my dream to teach in Baltimore. And research shows that children living in areas of poverty frequently receive an inferior education focused on skills-based learning and increasing test scores rather than a developmentally appropriate education that studies show resulted in long-lasting academic and social and emotional gains. I am dedicated to making sure Baltimore students receive a high-quality education, the education they deserve. I am here tonight because of the incredibly developmentally inappropriate curriculum, Wit and Wisdom. I am speaking on behalf of 60 kindergarten teachers who took a survey about Wit and Wisdom, which you're receiving the results of now. Of those 60, of those 60 teachers, 31 directly mentioned the program being developmentally inappropriate. In ranking potential changes to the curriculum, 54 out of 60 recommend cutting the curriculum from 75 minutes of whole-group instruction a day to 25 minutes a day as their first or second choice in ranking, and 23 participants felt kindergarten teachers need to take a look at this curriculum and adapt it to make it developmentally appropriate and meaningful to our students. 42 of the 60 teachers said it needs to be modified based on teacher flexibility and discretion to reduce the 75-minute portion, as we know our students best. Those tremendous other very valuable feedback in the surveys you're receiving. Many teachers discuss the use of close reading to the exclusion of other types of reading instruction. Research by Fisher and Frey, sent to me directly by Wit and Wisdom to support their curriculum, states close reading must be accompanied by other essential instructional practices that are vital to reading development. To abandon these practices in favor of close reading exclusively would be akin to having a toolbox with only one tool in it. It goes on to say that close reading should not be used with texts that are easily understood and simply organized. At its heart, close reading is about showing students that some text are worth that level of attention. However, Wit and Wisdom contradicts its own research by narrowing its focus to only close reading and using it with text regardless of their complexity. The overwhelming messages teacher are getting, teachers are getting from students due to this exclusive focus on close reading is their students hate reading and it's boring. Additionally, there is less writing in Wit and Wisdom than I expect from my students at this point in the year. Zero opportunities for open-ended writing or reading, which helps to motivate them and develop intrinsic motivation to become readers and writers, and many other reading strategies are being neglected. Developmentally appropriate practices are grounded in research of both how and what children should be learning at each developmental stage. Research in early childhood experts say that curriculum for children should be concrete, and they learn best through manipulation of materials and hands-on experiences. In talking about project-based learning, Judy Harris-Helm and Lilly and Katz explain projects, which is similar to the modules in Wit and Wisdom, are most likely to be successful when the topic is more concrete than abstract and involves an abundance of firsthand direct experiences with real objects. Young investigators are less likely to become deeply involved in their work when their role is passive and receptive rather than active. I have a lot more research I would love to share, but I know I need to wrap up. What we as 60 kindergarten teachers would really like is some time to meet with the board, teaching and learning and early learning, because we need to make adjustments to Wit and Wisdom so that it is appropriate for kindergarten, so we can meet the needs of our youngest learners, as well as keep curriculum engaging and rigorous.
Ms. Conley, would you want to respond?
First, Ms. Sayers, first of all, thank you very much for coming tonight. Anytime we're going to get feedback from the field, you know, it's going to be appreciated, we're going to use that, we're going to follow, we're going to look at it, and we're going to incorporate that into our professional learning opportunities. So I just want to first say thank you very much for that, as this came to my attention last night. I want to also add, we did have professional learning last week, and approximately 300 teachers across the grades came out, and one of the things, especially with the early learning, we do, we have heard from the field about the pacing, and we did specifically work on that in our professional learning, help our early learners, especially at K&amp;1, around chunking, pacing, lesson planning with that. So I just, again, want to thank you for this, and we'll continue to use that to support our professional learning.
Can I address the chunking that you're talking about?
Sure.
I am aware of the chunking that was talked about and discussed. What's happening with that is we're being told to take a 75-minute lesson and chunk it over the course of two days, which means that we're taking now a book for close reading, because every book in the curriculum we're supposed to do with close reading. And now, instead of focusing on, for five days, where children are already complaining about doing the book again and again, they want us to teach the same book for 10 to 14 days. We know our students in Baltimore frequently come to school with lower vocabulary and less literary experiences, and here we are taking books and doing simple books with close reading, like Chica Chica Boom Boom, and just doing it again and again and again, rather than exposing them to a wide variety of literature that helps develop their love of reading, as well as incorporate many other reading strategies. So the chunking in our early childhood profession and in our professional opinion among the teachers, it's, it's not enough. This curriculum needs to be modified.
Again, I would, I would... Again, I would, I would offer that you, you know, take up on the offer that's been given in terms of continuing to talk with Mr. Conley, with Chief Conley. And then I will say, you know, if, there may be a time if they, we need to have some additional conversation about this in more detail, that, that perhaps we could look at some time within the Teaching and Learning Committee. And because that meeting, that committee now meets at 3:30, it should be available for some teachers to come out, but I would ask that you please keep talking with Chief Conley, and then we can arrange, if we need to, to have some more conversation around that.
If I could just add to that, I know we're planning to do a, a report around the implementation of wit and wisdom, a written report for the board at the Teaching and Learning Committee in December, and then a presentation on it a little bit later near February, something that we're taking very seriously, this implementation here.
Very good. And so we can get, include some of that input. And thank you for, for coming in for sharing. I'm sorry. Commissioner Richardson?
I'm, I'm not an educator, so I just, if you could help me, do you know if wit and wisdom feels different or better the, in the older grades, or is it just at kindergarten where we have this kind of hiccup?
Um, I believe the biggest problem is K through 2. Wit and wisdom was originally researched for grades 3 through 8 and then adapted down to K through 2. And in third grade, our students, given if they're on the right trajectory, they should have most of the decoding and reading strategies they need. So then focusing on books that are more complex makes a little more sense to use close reading, and I have heard more positive things in the older grades. It's just the younger grades that it's really not appropriate for.
Okay. Um, how, I'm sorry, how long has this been implemented, wit and wisdom, if you would know?
We're in about week eight right now.
Okay. And is this the, how, when was the first feedback seminar? How much feedback have you gotten in the past eight weeks?
Uh, in, in a forum such as this, is this the second set of feedback? We had one at the last Teaching and Learning Committee, and then we have Ms. Sayers here tonight.
Okay. I just have a question. For the first page where it's, the questionnaire where it says, do you have all of your wit and wisdom materials for Module 1? Can you kind of elaborate on that? What do you mean by not, because surveys shows that people don't have their materials? Can you elaborate on that, please?
I would say, and that I didn't, because my focus was more on the inappropriateness of the curriculum, but it is another problem that about, I would say probably 60 to 70% of teachers do not have their materials. For example, the book that we're supposed to be reading this week with students, and we're supposed to have a copy of for every student for some of the activities, most schools, unless you have your own copy of it, do not have the book. It's on the internet that you can access, but, and that's been similar for pretty much all of the materials in Module 1. People don't have their materials, and so unless you have a personal copy or can get it from the library, which of course every teacher in the city is trying to get it from the library, because we're using it at the same time, people don't have the books and resources we need.
So, um, okay, all right, so how many books have you read, Ms. Sayers? Yeah, so far with the wit and wisdom?
Based on the curriculum, we've read one, two, three, five.
Five books, okay.
So, based on the curriculum, the kindergartners would have only heard five different books at this point in the year.
And how many of those five were?
The teachers did not have?
Commissioner Lynn, if I could ask, because some of this, we really do need to allow staff to take a look at the survey and to really connect, you know, with the teachers to get a little more information.
Of course.
I don't know that this is the appropriate spot for us to begin to ask details about what was given to us tonight.
Yeah.
But I assure you, we'll get the answers, but I, but I think we can, we'll let, we'll do the follow-up that way. I know Commissioner Berkeley also had another comment or question? Okay.
And what I will say also is that we have a regular implementation update, right? So the great part about this testimony coming now is it's right around the time for the implementation update. I will also say that at the time it gets reported out to Teaching and Learning, one of the other things that we found when we looked at some of Shanahan's work, is that actually the skills our kids were coming in with from pre-K and D.K., we saw it district-wide plummet in kindergarten across the district. So I think part of what we also have to take into account is the reading research with the developmentally appropriate research for early childhood and merge the two, because I don't want to also leave without a full, complete presentation, the, just one aspect of the research, because I also know the research. So I've heard from kindergarten teachers as well in my visits, and I do think that your timing is spot-on, because I was hearing some of the same themes when I'm out in classrooms. But I also want to be real clear that kindergarten, as we were doing it, was also leaving huge gaps, that our kids were coming to pre-K ready and they were dipping significantly in kindergarten. So across the district, I think we need to hold full bodies of research together. What we know about childhood development, but also what we know about direct and explicit instruction in reading. So I think the Teaching and Learning Committee is a great opportunity to, one, review the district-wide feedback, do it within the context of an update on implementation of Teaching and Learning, and, as well as really get up-to-date data around materials, which we knew were lagging because, quite frankly, we took district-wide teacher research through June. Had we just implemented it and pushed it down, we would have been able to order materials in April. So part of what we need to do is get your data from which teachers still find that they don't have materials. When I'm around in classrooms and I'm looking at some of the materials data, it staggered and we're further along. So I think what would do us all good service is to, one, have you all have the opportunity meet, and again, let's look at the entirety of the research, not just sections that are, that are picked for public comment. Okay? Great.
Just one, one, the survey information and the testimonials, are they each from an individual person?
Individual people.
Not, not one person giving multiple testimonials?
No, it's one person. To log in to Survey Monkey, you have to use a direct email address to make sure that it is, it's different testimony from people.
Okay.
Thank you again.
And yes, we would definitely very love to be involved in Teaching and Learning and having further conversations around this.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you send this to me electronically?
Yes, absolutely. I can send you the full information.
Sorry.
Okay.
No, not for that. Dr. Santa Lisa, I, so I hear, hear what you're saying. I'm so, I'm just trying to understand, is wit and wisdom this program that I'm not knowledgeable, is it saying that, are, is this supposed to fill, fill the gap for the things that we have been in the future?
So, so I think one of, one of the things that is true, right? And I think what's important about the testimony that we heard is that the implementation, right, that there is no one set of curriculum materials that are gonna do everything. That it's just, it's not been there. The entirety of my career in education, there's never been a set of materials that perfectly do everything. I think the power of the testimony this evening was, how is the implementation of particular materials impacting students and teachers at particular grade levels? So yes, part of why we adopted wit and wisdom, part of why we are focusing in on the retraining of teachers and foundations is because we did see a dip. We have kids district-wide coming from pre-K, and we've reviewed this with the Teaching and Learning Committee of the board. This is transparent data. And we have kids who are advanced, who are ahead of the state leaving pre-K, who fall off a reading cliff in kindergarten district-wide. And a lot of that was the lack of explicit instruction and particular reading strategies. But as we heard during testimony, we also similarly have a parallel challenge, right, in frankly classrooms that are not incorporating the hands-on, movement-based, right, kinesthetic and engaging kinds of activities that support that. So I think it's important for everyone to understand that it is a combination of both. But we had a district-wide challenge in kindergarten. We had kids coming from pre-K who had started to read, who were falling off of a cliff during kindergarten. And so no one curriculum is going to address that, one. Two, we have to receive the feedback of teachers who are in the field and saying, this is how we're experiencing it. And if teachers are experiencing it as, everything else I do that supports young people being squeezed out, then I would say we need to take a look at both, the implementation in terms of what's being asked, as well as what the materials are. But yes, they were, and no set of materials is perfect, but I just want us all to be clear, it's not like kindergarten was happy-go-lucky a year ago and we were doing great, and now it's horrible this year because of wit and wisdom. I think we have multiple needs. Some are developmental needs, because kids should not be locked in desks and whole groups all day long, right, just tied to one text. If the text pacing is too slow in terms of what teachers are experiencing, then we need to adjust that. But, but I, I just want, like, everybody to realize, part of why we put that in is because we were seeing large numbers of our young people who were excelling in pre-K, and I will say again, were falling off of a literacy cliff in kindergarten, because we were not following what we know the research is also, not just developmentally, but what we also know the research is about how kids learn to read. And it was absent. So that's why we do need teachers, that's why we should be listening to what the implementation is, but I don't want all of us to now suddenly grab and say, let's go back to the heyday of what we were doing last year. Nor is wit and wisdom some like demon that as long as we purge it from classrooms, magically kindergarten is going to become what it needs to become. It's going to require us to partner, to adjust, right, and to be able to report to the board and to the public what implementation looks like and how we need to improve it.
Thank you, I just needed clarification.
And, and let me just add that, you know, the process for the selection of the curriculum was, was one that was a, a, a pretty intense and lengthy one, that it, that did involve many of the stakeholders. And so the process for implementing and fully implementing is, is not gonna be a, a short, easy one either. So we will continue. And, and again, we want to thank the teachers and all those teachers who took part in the survey in terms of presenting their feedback. Is it Corey Witherspoon?
Yes.
Oh, good. Sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't, I couldn't quite read it, but thank you.
All right. Um, how is everyone doing? Thank you, commissioners, and a special thanks to Superintendent Dr. Santa Lisa for, like, all your support and Seeds of Promise mentoring. The reason why I'm here today is actually in support of school police. I know December 13th, y'all have, we all have like a, a forum for legislative, but personally, Officer James who at the door, he Renaissance Academy, Booker T. Washington, he's school police. Seeds of Promise not only deals with the youth on a social and emotional level, we also take care of climate and culture. Renaissance Academy, as everybody know, like, the stabbing that, that happened in Renaissance Academy, I believe it was like, what, three, 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 four years ago, and the death of, of a mentee, so these, these brothers, at the time it was Officer James and Officer Edward Cooper, they were my first responders. They, 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 you know, they, they, they came and they, they assisted, and they did all they could. As we look at stats, and we always look at data, talking about last year, three guns was found in Baltimore City's public schools. With that, they, it's, this is youth in the neighborhood, a lot of times they, they dealing with issues and cognitively, they, they can't go ahead and reason to the fact, whereas they, they say like, I don't need to go ahead and bring a gun. Like, if they get triggered by social media or a phone call, or even they make a phone call in the middle of a, a altercation, that's all chaos. And I, I've been there, frontline with, with, with my school police, like, to, so to say, like, they can't have guns in the building, like, this is a crazy world, and Baltimore's only over 200 deaths by murder. Baltimore is like the murder capital per, per capita. So I mean, I, I really think it's absurd. Another thing, 45 school lockdowns in, 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 in last year. Lockdowns, if anybody don't know, is that, that means the community, communities in peril. A tragedy's happened in the community, meaning that somebody has been shot or somebody has been stabbed, somebody has been robbed, and I, I could name alone, like, five, six lockdowns that happened in the communities. And, you know, the, the, the school police keeps us safe, keep the staff safe, keep the teachers safe. I can also, like, a first account, like, you know, the, the students, they, they, they fight outside the school. Parents come out with doggone, uh, uh, crowbars and all type of weaponry to go ahead and, and, and fight another child, because the child went and called the parent. You know, so I, I know, I know I'm, I'm hectic, but I, I have to be a strong advocate for Baltimore City Police. And one more thing, I, I know time is a spotty, but I have to say this. Many people in here have never had a student who, who's from the, the hardest of neighborhoods say, I want to shoot you, and I'm coming back to shoot you. See, but that's what Baltimore City School Police, that, I, I call them. And that they, they go ahead and they, they dispatch and they, they, they call the different areas of the communities, like, to keep us safe. That way we can go ahead and, and, and work the socio-emotional needs of students, we can go ahead and teach and keep a, a stable environment for youth. That's why they have to have those guns at schools, they protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McFadden?
Corey, I want to just applaud you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you, bro.
I know that the, I know the work that Seeds of Promise does.
Yes, sir.
I witnessed that, teaching at Booker T. And since Officer James is standing in the room, I definitely want to shout him out also, because I worked with him for about three, three, four years. And I think the general consensus is we do, very much so, appreciate our school police department. But speaking to Officer James and the work that they do in that 21217 zip code is exceptional. And the relationships that they build with young people are exceptional.
Yes.
Um, and, and their presence in those buildings, it's incredible to have their presence in the buildings. But just watching the way that they have relationships with young people, the way that they know their parents, the way that they know what is happening, I felt so safe in that, in that building, just because they literally were our intelligence. They knew everything that was happening. Before something popped off, they already kind of knew so that they could kind of de-escalate the situation. So I do want to applaud Officer James, because he's standing here, but to our, our whole, to our whole police department, thank you for coming and speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Commissioner McFadden, what, what group is, are they with and how do they work with teachers and school resource officers or police?
Seeds of Promise.
I didn't make the connection, so maybe, yeah.
Seeds of Promise is, I want to say that, are they a contractual group?
Tell us, tell a little bit about Seeds of Promise.
Seeds of Promise is, is a mentoring group. We're a partner. We work hands, hand in hand with the, the, the administration, school police, the community, and then more importantly, the student. Transforming the, the young men to, who, some, some come in wayward to like, you know, young men who's college-ready and career-ready. So we, we work with, work with them all, the ones who just came from DJS, to, to, to the ones who, you know, they, they just dealing with socio-emotional needs, and we, we work with them to go ahead and transform them into, you know, capable young men who's doing really, 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 really well.
And that's outside of school also. So it's not just while they're in the school building, you all are mentoring and monitoring them.
And I'm happy.
Outside, making sure that they're in school and, and the, their attendance is, is becoming better.
And I'm happy, the, the thing is, is that, is a beautiful thing, is that Brother, Brother McFadden can speak to it, whereas, you know, like, I, 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 I'd be remiss if I don't say how many countless hours that Seeds of Promise spends outside of school, working with youth, the, the 3 o'clock in the morning phone calls, the 6:45 morning wake-up calls to come to school, the pickups in the morning to come to school. So it's, it's a wraparound that, that, that we, we bring the youth, because we, we know that we, they gotta be in school, they, they gotta be great, and we, we, we help them make them great. And I, I always want to say, thank you, Dr. Santa Lisa, for, you know, all the advocacy that you did to keep Seeds of Promise in school. All right.
Well, thank you, thank you for being that strong village for our young people. Thank you. Christina Duncan-Evers?
Evan.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Evans?
Duncan Evans.
Thank you. I, I know who you are, but I mean, when I'm trying to read the paper, my glasses aren't working too well this evening, sorry about that.
Good evening. My name is Christina Duncan Evans, and I'm a school librarian in Baltimore City. I'm part of the Baltimore Movement of Rank and File Educators, and I'm here to speak in support of Kathleen Sayers and the 60 teachers who completed her survey. I'd first like to say that the Office of Teaching and Learning has yet to show that they can accurately diagnose the instructional needs of the city and prescribe the right medicine. I use a health metaphor intentionally, because I want you to imagine going to a doctor and telling him that a medication he prescribed you wasn't working. Then imagine his only response, no matter what symptoms you listed, was to stick to the regimen. In the pages of the survey, I've seen a clear pattern of feedback from kindergarten teachers that adjustments need to be made to wit and wisdom, but the Office in Teaching and Learning is overwhelmingly insisting that teachers and PSRP's implement the curriculum with fidelity. that teachers and PSRP's implement the curriculum with fidelity. It doesn't matter if the children are bored. It doesn't matter if they're having trouble controlling their bodies for long periods of time. What's important is that we take a full dose of the medicine so we can see if it works. Why are children being used as guinea pigs? In the spring, we questioned your sense of urgency and asked that you slowed down. You didn't pilot the lessons, you didn't spend enough time training teachers, and you didn't have supplemental curriculum materials ready to help scaffold our students to the new work. The CEO just noted that we knew it wouldn't be a perfect fit or silver bullet, so not having the supplements ready to go does a disservice to our students. To say that the supplemental materials weren't ready, also, we need to address that the primary materials are not ready and are not in teachers' hands. Now, because of this sense of urgency, both teachers who were successful last year and those who struggled are now struggling equally. Is this what you meant when you said you wanted to address equity? Madam CDO, please don't hear something we didn't say. To misrepresent Kathleen's position is not okay. Her survey asks teachers what changes they want, not whether we should go back to what we were doing before. They are not saying wit and wisdom should be scrapped. They're saying they need to be flexible and they need to be allowed to make real-time adjustments to help our students meet these new expectations. The people who wrote this curriculum didn't know our kids, but our educators do. And when they speak this loudly and consistently, you should listen. My final thought has to do with the way teaching and learning is structuring PD. In the last Teaching and Learning Committee policy meeting, the Office presented the ongoing themes of the year, one of which was helping teachers to support a wide spectrum of learners. Under the category of spectrum of learners, the Office said they would address the diverse spectrum of math learners by incorporating multicultural and culturally relevant content into the problems. If you ask any math teacher what their biggest problem is with the diversity of learners, it's how to explain grade-level math concepts to students who are currently performing years below grade level. The biggest problem in this specific area of math instruction isn't about race. And making a word problem more urban doesn't begin to scratch the surface of the most important math problems in a Baltimore City math class. But it does say a lot about the capacity of teaching and learning to fix those problems.
Okay, thank you. I think we're, again, I would ask that, and I know you've come to the Teaching and Learning Committee, that we will continue with the dialogue and with the response from the survey. I know you gave us some beginning parts of the survey at Teaching and Learning, I believe. And so now we have the full, a little more data. So Chief Conley will be following up. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Keisha Goodwin? You go ahead, Ms. Goodwin.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Madam CEO. Today I will review the Senate Bill 361. This bill went into effect July 1st, 2017. However, all schools have not received the multiplier as stated in this bill. Eligibility is determined for entire local education agency and group of schools within an LEA or single school within an LEA, whichever is elected by the community eligibility provision. To be eligible to participate in CEP, the percentage of identified students must be at least 40% direct certification of enrollment. An LEA may have some schools that participate in CEP and others that do not, which can be found on page two in paragraph one. However, this district chose for everyone to be a CEP school, a CEP district, and that is the good news. So basically, direct certification includes Medicaid, SNAP, TCA, et cetera. However, there are some concerns. The district is lacking to fully implement this law, which is on page two in the second paragraph where it explains the multiplier. What is the function of the multiplier? The function of the multiplier is to provide an estimate of the percentage of students eligible for free and reduced-priced meals and participating in CEP schools, groups of schools, or LEAs that is comparable to the poverty percentage that will be obtained in a non-CEP school. The number of students directly certified is a subset of the total number of students eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. Using only the number of identified students would result in a lower poverty percentage for CEP schools or LEAs. With the multiplier, who can change the multiplier? It is not the district that can change the multiplier. The USDA has the authority to change the multiplier to a number between 1.3 and 1.6. Any change to the multiplier will be communicated by USDA well in advance of the effective date of the change. Schools and LEAs that elect CEP keep the same multiplier throughout the four-year CEP cycle. So I'm wondering, what is the multiplier for BCPSS? Because we have to keep the same one. The multiplier is very important to maintain a school substance. Restricting funds to schools create poverty within our school buildings. And I'm also concerned about the system restricting funds to Title I, saying that the Medicaid numbers of students eligible for Title I haven't come in yet and that if, when they do come in, that they wouldn't be applied and those funds wouldn't be distributed to the schools. So that is another concern that I have.
I'm sorry. Could you say that last one again? Because I'm sorry, I wasn't quite following.
Okay, so I have concerns about the funding distributions, how the district allocate funds to the schools. And one of them is the multiplier based upon the law.
I understood the multiplier. It was the last.
The other one is the students who are eligible for Title I are students that are low achievement, poverty. And one of those things that they use to measure is Medicaid. And what I was told from a principal is that she was told from the district that they would not be getting the funds for those students who receive Medicaid, the Title I funds, because the district hadn't received their Medicaid numbers in time. And when they do receive it, they wouldn't be getting it. So I'm just here to ask if that's true.
So Ms. Goodwin, what we can do on that is if you, do you want to start? Or we can circle back with you because I don't have the answer off the top of my head right now in terms of where the funds are or not. And I need to sit down and actually meet with folks unless there's somebody here who wants to.
I'm looking to Teresa to verify what I think, but I'm pretty sure I'm right, that the state does not allow us to pay based on Medicaid. The state makes a determination whether you can use Medicaid. And they currently do not allow it. Is that correct?
Again, Teresa Jones, Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer. So there are a couple of key considerations as it relates to Title I funding and our ability to use certain poverty measurement data for the allocation of Title I. So the state has maintained the position that the state's definition of direct certification does not currently include Medicaid. There was an opt-in period where the state chose not to include Medicaid data for that purpose. Based on that, the direction that was given to LEAs is that it would not be allowed to be included in any of the district allocations for Title I. Since then, there has been conversations that have been generated partly because Baltimore County has their own separate Medicaid data collection apart from what the state provides, which is the Medicaid data that's used for the remaining 23 LEAs. To be able to say that if they wanted to include Medicaid, they would have to provide their separate data set, additional auditing, so on and so forth. Because technically speaking, the feds do allow for Medicaid to be included. Either way, it still leaves Baltimore City in the current position where we're unable to use the Medicaid data because we do not have a Medicaid data set that would meet the federal requirements for an annual update of Medicaid data.
Thank you.
So if I was to somehow get the Medicaid data that might be eligible for the district to use, would that be acceptable?
At this point, we have an outstanding request from the state of Maryland to obtain the Medicaid data when that data set is available. Once we have that data, we can do the appropriate analyses to understand what the implications would be as it relates to the redistribution of funds. Because again, once you identify a different set of poverty data, it gives you a different basis for determining the poverty rates. And Title I funds are directly distributed based on poverty rates and have to be done in rank order. So until we have a data set that has been verified for the state for us to be able to use, we're unable to complete that analysis. And we're unable to determine whether or not including Medicaid going forward is one of the ways that we should be redistributing funds for Title I schools.
And that doesn't sound like something that would happen within the current school year. So that's the question you're asking.
Now, I will say, I think, you know, in terms of the broader question, there is a broader question that we continue to wrestle with, which is what are the ways that we can take a look at poverty data so that we have a better understanding around what actually is going on across our student population? There are implications on multiple fronts. It's not just the Title I question. Folks will recall that we reconstructed our fair student funding model with an eye towards how we take a look at poverty and how do we collect data to reflect that? So I just want to acknowledge that there is a top-of-mind consideration around what are the various ways that we can look at the data and how it can be utilized. I just want to make sure that we're clear around where we currently stand as it relates to specific data sets, for example, Medicaid, as was mentioned this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Frank? Okay, all right, Ms. Goodwin, you okay with that? We'll try to get the other answer that you asked for. I think we can, we'll try to get that to you in terms of you were asking. I know the multiplier has not changed because the law, as you said, you maintain it. But if you want that specifically, we can ask staff to get that information to you.
Yes, because the schools in my community says they have not received their multiplier.
Next, we have Mr. Rodney Hudson.
Good evening, commissioners. I come back here to stand, just a few days ago, I was in a meeting with some community leaders. And we were talking about the revitalization plan that we have for Sandtown area. And, you know, things are going quite well with our other plans as it relates to housing and all those things. But what was interesting to me was the question about the charter school and what happened with the charter school. And someone responded, "Well, the reason why a charter school is not going to go there is because the residents of Sandtown didn't want a charter school." And I questioned, I said, "Who told you that information?" Because that's far from the truth. They said, "Well, there's some surveys that says that the residents from Sandtown does not want a charter school." And I was baffled by that because I've been working in that community for many, many years. And these last two years in particular, we've dealt and come together with the community. And not once have I heard that the community did not want a charter school. Now, let me applaud the work that has been done by the Baltimore City Schools as it relates to getting the community organized for the upcoming merger. I think that's very, very important to do that. But I've been left off the list. I've not been able to attend the meetings, and I don't know what's going on. And I think that's so unfair that I was first on the list and now I'm off the list. And I would like to be put back on the list so that I can represent the community in my area. It's only four or five blocks. But those residents need to hear as well. Those residents who attend our aim shalom community organization need to know what's going on. Now, they are invited to those meetings, but not everyone is coming. And I'm concerned that the recommendation that will be coming down about what's going to happen in Sandtown will be made by the four, five, or six people who come to the meeting. That does not represent the entire community. Now, here's another concern. Whoever said that Sandtown does not want a charter school, I would love to see that survey. Because I haven't seen a survey that said that. I know I've been at some great meetings where they ask, "What would you like to see in Sandtown?" But never had I seen a survey that said, "Do you want a charter school?" Now, let me say this. Education is very important. You all are doing a great job and trying to make sure that happens. And I don't, I do not question your love for the children of Sandtown. But I would like to say this to you, that all the voices must matter, even the voices that you don't like to hear. And I know that some of my partners have been like little nets that keep on ticking at you and bothering you. But we cannot allow those voices who we don't like to hear to determine the outcome of education for their entire piece. Let me tell you, when I heard the CEO talk about the great education that's going on and that her twin daughters are going to that school that happens to be a charter school, I said, "Well, we can have the same thing." In fact, our organization wanted to build the 21st Century School and have started collecting money to do that. That meant that you would not have had to build that school. And as far as I know, not one person has said that we're going to build a 21st Century School in Sandtown. Well, we were ready to tackle that thing. And I want you, as you, these upcoming months, I know my time is up. I want you to think about this again and again and again. What is really good for Sandtown as it relates to the whole and not just the piece? Not just the New Song Academy, but to everyone. Thank you so much for your time. And I look forward to being put back on that list so I can go to the meetings and know what's going on.
Mr. Hudson, is this, if this, if, is it Pastor Hudson or Mr. Hudson?
You can just call me Rodney Hudson. I'll be one. I'm not caught up on the title.
If your email information is correct on the sheet, I'm going to, I'll make certain that folks have it so that you can get information about the next meeting. So I can do that part for you.
Thank you.
Dr. Santa Lisa also wants to respond.
It's just one question. Did you, were you saying that you had heard that someone from the school department had said that the reason why the charter school didn't go forward?
I did hear that. Of course, you can never go about what you hear. My mother used to say, "Believe half of what you hear and none of what you..." Well, half of what you see and none of what you hear. So my concern is not necessarily what I heard. My concern is what you believe, what you believe. And I want you to believe this. And Ms. Everas is doing a good job over there. Don't, I'm not talking bad about you, Dr. Everas. You're doing a good job. And I know you're doing your job, and you're doing the best to your ability because Sandtown is a hard place. But please, don't count us out yet because that last vote you had, I was disappointed because I didn't know the way it was going to go. But that last vote, not one person stood up and said, "Well, I think we should have a school in Sandtown." Not one of you said that, and I was disheartened because I thought at least one person would stand up and say, "Well, let's give them a chance." But not even one. No, not one said a word. But that's okay. That's next year. And I'm hoping I get one. Can I get one?
So I just want you to know, you shouldn't interpret the decision and the analysis of the application and the case that's presented as anything. And I won't speak for the board, but I feel kind of comfortable saying that that was not the driving factor. That was certainly not the driver from the recommendation. It was based on the proposal. And that's part of why I wanted to hear where you were hearing it coming from. Because if you were hearing it coming from folks within the school system, then I wanted to know that so that we could rectify whoever's sending that message. Because that's not how we make determinations, that I make determinations about my recommendation and then the board.
Well, unfortunately, I wish I had known your recommendation before I brought that busload of people down here to get disappointed.
Well, yeah, but the busload of people is what let us know that everybody was passionate about the application. So I don't regret the busload.
I had no idea what your recommendation was. And had I known that you had already recommended for us not to have the charter school, I would not have brought them down here to be disappointed.
Fair enough.
But thank you so very much for hearing me. And I look forward to being more engaged in the process. And Ms. Everas, you keep on doing what you're doing now. All right? We'll talk to you later.
Ms. Alares would like to say something to you.
So early on in the process of engaging the Sandtown community, we were having community meetings. And Reverend Hudson attended some of those community meetings. We had difficulty getting enough people to attend, so we changed strategy. So we focused on attending community events. So we did the mayor's barbecue event. We elevated, had a barbecue. We attended schools, back-to-school nights. We did some door knocking. So we haven't started big community meetings. We had like one recently, but we haven't went back to the community meeting. So that's the next step. So that's why you see that change. So you attended the community meetings that we held, but we changed strategy to focus on attending events.
I do understand.
Because remember, people weren't coming inside. So you said, "People are not coming to us." Then we need to change strategy and go to the people. So that's what we did.
And that makes sense. I just hope that whatever recommendation that is made about the closure of those schools will be a recommendation that, I don't know. Maybe you can go to the churches themselves where the people go and ask the churches to be a part or even have a meeting at the churches. Because a lot of people are, Sandtown is a unique place. You know it. So let's just be prayerful and hopefully we can get this thing going the right way. Thank you.
So we would love to do that. I'll follow up with you offline.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you again for coming and letting us know what's happening. Keep us on target. I need to apologize to Gwendolyn Unoko. I'm sorry, I skipped, but I'm coming back.
My name is Gwendolyn Unoko. I'm a Child First Authority Community School Coordinator at Calvin M. Rodwell Elementary Middle School. I really, I'm here, I just want to share and give an update. We're part of the 21st Century Plan. And as of July 1, 2018, we also became a middle school. And past years, our enrollment has been around 350 to 375 students. And at the beginning of this year, we had a higher number than we anticipated. We estimated we would be around 575 students because there's usually some type of attrition when there's a transition underway. And as of yesterday, I think we have 706 students at our school. And we wanted to share that in addition to us having a middle school because we had some lessons that we learned from Dorothy I. High Elementary School when they were going through the transition process. And by partnering with them, they're our sister school with Child First as well. By learning some lessons from them, we were able to take on some other initiatives. For example, we hired a transition coordinator with one of our partners, with Gold Sacer Foundation and with City Neighbors Foundation, so that we could have someone to call every single family and reach out to them and help connect them with the school. And we held like five events because we wanted to be able to address any rumors that were going on in the community and to give a forum, a place for there to be rich conversations that were going on. At this time, there's a lot that's going on in our school. We have our inaugural volleyball team, flag football, there's tennis, there's, in the past, we've only had Child First, who's been with Calvin Rodwell for 22 years as an after-school program provider. But in addition to that, they also lead the community school. And we also have Sylvan Learning Center. And there's another private after-school program in our school as well, where about 200 students are getting support or after-school opportunities, whether it's culinary, or karate, or dance, or music, and other activities. But I also want to share with you that we have other hopes and aspirations. As a community school, this is our seventh year, and I've been a community school coordinator for seven years. But now, because of the growth in our community, additional staff, additional families, we've had to go back to some of year one's strategy of getting to know the community, getting to know families, getting acclimated to students, and rebuilding the community that we had established before when we were someplace else. But physically, our principal, I'm sorry, I didn't say. His name is Samuel Rather. I think, I'm biased, I think he's amazing. He's building an amazing team at Calvin Rodwell. And I'm also thankful that our executive directors, Inez DeHann is here as well. But what I want to close with is there, in addition to all the district's curriculums and priorities, our own priorities in our building are literacy. And it's also, we're discussing race and equity in our building because of the temperament of our nation and the temperament of our city. And I want to close, my time has expired. I want to close with our newly created vision with our staff. And it says that Calvin Rodwell Elementary Middle School family will build a school community where students are equally loved, protected, and educated so they can realize the beauty and power they have within to become lifelong learners and leaders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sounds like you're developing your 21st Century School before you even have that new building to go with it. So things should be wonderful when it all comes together. Thank you. Commissioner Bondima?
Thank you.
I just have to make a comment about Calvin Rodwell. My sister's daughter-in-law is Rodwell, Calvin Rodwell's daughter.
Mr. Stenness wife?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And that school has a lot of love and a lot of people supporting them. And I'm really proud of that school. The family is involved in that school, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so you have a lot of partnership, I mean, support if ever you need it. Because the school, you know how the school was named.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
After a fallen police officer died in a...
He was murdered, yes, it was her dad. So I know that when you have activities, they always show up.
Yes, ma'am.
And show out. So if you ever need anything, you know where to go to.
I do. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Richardson?
Every time I talk with you, Gwen, you have such an amazing energy. And I just feel like I wanted to announce that. So you were one of our founding parents in Northeast Baltimore, City Neighbors. And the work that you're doing now at Calvin Rodwell, I think, is amazing. And I just wanted to just put that out there, that I appreciate you as a person. And the school is blessed for having you as a part of this process.
Blessed to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seku Kasimou?
Madam CEO, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Seku Kasimou. For those who don't know me, I keep forgetting sometimes to introduce myself. I want to share, oh, first things first. I found a student's charm card. Who should I give it to? I want to share a letter titled "The Secret Meeting That Changed Rap Music and Destroyed a Generation." I have a copy. I have nine copies for you all to read. And it documents how the gangsters in the recording industry called the rappers together in '91 and leaned on them, told them, "We want y'all to make music that glorifies, promote criminal activity only so that we can fill up these private prisons." This letter documents it. They even went so far as to make them sign confidentiality agreements and told them that if they violated their confidentiality agreement, they did so at their own risk. I'm not a conspiracy theorist. And quite frankly, a lot of conspiracy theories that Dick Gregory used to talk about, they, to me, were like laughable. But this one is for real. And any educator, especially with the poor, like in Sandtown, need to be aware of this information. So I'm going to have copies for all of y'all. Moving right along, in Georgia, yesterday or today, I saw it on the news. A student stabbed a teacher in the chest with a butcher knife. He then took a hostage, another student hostage, and the school police resource officer had to disarm him. In Montgomery County, Maryland, a former student made threats against the school. And he was subsequently arrested, not in Montgomery County, in Towson, Maryland. It's getting closer and closer. And he had an AR-15, which is easily modified to fire automatic. If you remember the Parkland, Florida shooting, I had a premonition the day before that that was going to happen, or something like that. I had that same premonition about this incident that originated in Montgomery County. Why did he travel all the way to Baltimore County and get arrested in Towson with an AK-47? Our school police officers need to be armed. If the worst should come to pass, y'all gonna get the blame. Because they say y'all are educators, y'all professionals. You knew or should have known that our school police officers need to be armed. And in closing, I want to thank the CEO and her entourage for coming down to Sandtown. A lot of people not going to come to Sandtown. Yeah, the Shake and Bake. And hopefully, we're going to hold you to your commitment to come back on a regular basis and share.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you also for being there and introducing me to, was it the Assistant Director of the Shake and Bake?
Yes, Brenda Irvin, Assistant Director.
Yes, who was wonderful. So thank you, too.
My pleasure.
Did you skate?
No, there was no skating that night.
Okay.
But I will tell you, there's been a ground swell that we need to have an end-of-the-school-year Skate With the CEO event. So we're working on it. We're working on it.
Our last speaker tonight is Tammy Edwards.
Hello. My name is Tammy. I am a parent of some, a bunch of students in a bunch of city schools. And tonight, my concern is safety at one of the schools as it relates to persons being able to enter a school at any time during the day without administrators, school police, or anybody being notified. When I go to visit the schools, I always have to check in at the main office, give an ID and things like that, and have a little sticker I wear. I'm going to go to an incident that happened at one of the schools that I'm concerned about and which a knife was brought in the building and held to a child. And another child was assaulted by a student who did not belong in the school and was wearing another school uniform. And I'm just trying to figure out what methods, what measures are being taken to ensure our kids' safety in these schools. And also, the accountability of the students who commit different, like assaults or come with a knife, and the administrators and how they're handling the situations. So that's my concern tonight.
And I'm sitting here with Tammy because she's a member of my church. And I've seen her raise her daughters. She has eight children. She was homeless. And three of her children have graduated from high school and going to college. She's from Sandtown, lived there, and now her children are going to Patterson. And so she's legitimately, her children have been bullied the entire time that they've been in Baltimore City because they come from the eastern shore and from North Carolina, and they were kind of different. Those are children back there sitting there. They were little babies when they first came. So her concern about safety and security is a real concern, given what she is going through at this current moment. Because the examples that she gave is what happened to her. Her daughter's been with a knife at her. Her kid has been assaulted. And this is a very alarming concern. And we've got to get on top of what's going on, not only at Patterson School, but the schools around our community. When he's talking about arming these police, something has to be done. Because we're going to have a major problem if we don't step up to the plate. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
No, you were going, you had 30 seconds.
Yeah. And I would say, Ms. Edwards, if you have a specific school or an incident, I mean, that you need to really report because we do have, you know, discipline policy. And it's in place that some of what I heard of that was occurring can be handled directly. So I'm not going to ask you the school publicly, but I would say if you wanted to talk with either someone here.
Mr. Doug Kennedy is having.
Okay, thank you. And, okay.
Is there a written discipline policy?
Absolutely. And you should have gotten, if you have several children in school, because I have several grandchildren. And I've seen at least four copies of the handbook that came out to parents in the fall that has all of that fully, the policy, the consequences, everything. So, yeah, so pull that back out. If not, call and you can get another copy.
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you also for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank everyone who did come to speak with us. At this time, I'm going to go back to the items that were on the consent agenda following the public comment. Are there any additional items that board members would like to have pulled? If not, could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda? Commissioner Frank, second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor, please raise your hands. I see Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Reed, Frank, Berkeley, and Richardson. Is that eight? Thank you. I keep forgetting their part. Thank you very much. Now, we're going back to the, our information items, correct? And I believe we are now on the, we're ready to talk about winter preparedness? Okay. On this nice summer-fall day.
But before I turn it over to Dr. Washington and the team, I just want to say that the work that the team has done, operations has done since January in revamping protocols, in basically installing more remote capability to review buildings. And just all of the work that you see here really was a collective effort. And I think puts us in a much better place to communicate with families, to really be able to communicate out internally where we are. And we witnessed some of that actually at the beginning of school, that our communication to families about where we were with temperature, being able to coordinate internally between the school's office, operations, and others to make far more accurate decisions in real time has improved dramatically. I want to thank the four folks you're going to hear from now as well as the legions of other people who really have stepped up to the plate. I do, though, also want to say that in a winter preparedness update, one of the questions I get asked frequently is whether or not this means that there, you know, that everything is straight and that we'll never again have a temperature challenge or a heat challenge in any Baltimore City public school. And I want to, I just want to make clear that the overall challenge of backlogged, you know, resources, right, a lack of resources to deal with some of the most egregious facilities, challenges that we have is not going to go away because of their diligence. I think what is happening is that we are communicating more effectively. They are more efficient. We're able to make better in-time decisions, and for that, I commend them. But I want everyone to be really clear that the work that this team has done, as wonderful as it is and as much as it positions us to go into this winter far better prepared, I want to be very clear, their work does not eradicate the capital needs that we have in our school buildings. They are years and decades in the making. And you are not going to eradicate underinvestment in school facilities by just, you know, giving these folks a magic wand because it doesn't exist. So I want us all to be clear, you know, I'm not trying to steal your thunder. You will see that they have done yeoman's work. They met with me frequently and the Chief of Staff. But I just want the public to be very, very clear that we still have capital challenges that are not going to be managed away, efficiencyed away, technologically taken care of because we now have remote systems. That fundamentally, the question about investment in quality 21st century learning spaces for all children in Baltimore City public schools remains a public interest, a public safety issue that we are all going to have to face. So I just want to say that it's not still their thunder. They did amazing work, we're going to hear about it. But I just want us all to be clear, what they are not coming up and saying is that they have now eradicated every capital challenge in Baltimore City public schools. We, as the public, are still going to have to advocate for what is deserved, what our children deserve in terms of the right learning environments that are conducive to learning. But thank you for your work. And now, turn it back over to Dr. Washington.
Thank you, and we appreciate the introduction. I'm Lynette Washington. I'm the interim Chief Operating Officer.
Jeff Wilson, Assistant Director of Mechanical Maintenance and Engineering.
Monique Grumo, Assistant Director of Building Maintenance and Inspections.
Blaine Lipsky, Director of Facility Maintenance and Operations.
And then also on our team is Dr. Nicole Stewart, who is the Director of Planning, and Bill Levy, who is also our special project supervisor. And so I do appreciate the introduction. One of the things that we're going to talk about today, when we talk about winter preparedness, we're going to talk about it in the context of some of the things that did happen in January and how, again, as Dr. Sanzalisis has been saying, that over the last two and a half years, operations has been focusing... the last two and a half years, operations has been focusing on improvements, efficiencies, and some of those various components, looking at staffing structures. And we have, in light of January, been going back to looking at those processes, resetting and continuing some of the work that we have been moving forward with. And then also inviting external outside support to provide reviews, validations, and also just insight on other ways that we can improve from a private sector perspective. So as we, one of the things that always is the question is what happened in January. And so I want to begin the presentation by talking about what happened in January, and then talk a little bit about our processes and how we move forward. So one of the biggest challenges that happened in January is that we had a week-long period of very cold and frigid weather. And it had an impact on our facilities, and facilities that during this period of time, it was a holiday period, so there weren't a lot of people in and out of those, those buildings. We did have our in-house engineers that were going in and checking on our facilities, but we were limited. We were limited by the fact of our staffing, having one engineer servicing 15 to 18 buildings with, that's the ratio, which in other school systems, the ratio is a one-to-one, one engineer, one building. The other issue that we had was that we had no outside technology virtual monitoring system that allowed us to be able to know what was also happening in our buildings. And so when we, schools started on that, that day in January, there were things that were happening in the buildings, and we had no critical alerts to know that was happening. And then also just communications with the custodian support staff that were in those buildings, be able to tell them how to prepare for those facilities for the winter. And so that resulted in a number of different things. We were also impacted by the infrastructure within the city. And so even though Baltimore City was highlighted, Baltimore City Schools was highlighted as having been impacted by that winter weak period, there were other facilities across the city, and there was an infrastructure, there were power outages that were happening across the city, too. And so that also led to ruptured pipes in some, in some of our buildings because of the cold freeze, not having power for a number of different, for a number of days. We took a deep dive to say, a comparison between what happened in the past January to what happened this January. And one of the comparisons shows that we looked at, if you just look at work orders, we have a significantly more than double the work orders from last January. If you look at building-wide versus non-building-wide, one of the ways that we make this difference is that a building-wide issue is when a system has impacted the entire building and the building is shut down versus a univat in a particular classroom. And so that's a non-building-wide incident. And so you can see that in both periods, there's a significantly larger number of, of incidents that happened. When we talk about the buildings with repeat building-wide incidents, that is generally if it's two or more. So there is a work order that is put in because something has happened with the system, a technician has come to respond, that has been resolved, and then another issue happens. Again, these are older facilities. So for our HVAC systems, many of them are over 30 to 35 years. In industry standards, you do a replacement at 20 to 25 years. One of our oldest systems was built in 1945 and is still operating today. And so when we talk about some of the issues that we're having in our buildings, a lot of it has to do with the age of our facilities and the limited ability to make capital replacements. So for the rest of the presentation, we're just, are gonna talk about generally how we prepare for the winter, some of the changes that we've made. So previously, how we've operated and how we've operated and right set after January. We're gonna also talk about some of the funding support that we've received, and then I'll talk about our communications, and communications being internal communications with our schools and also other forward communications with the public.
Okay. We started off this past year with a lot of preventative maintenance. Every year, we, the, the-
Did you introduce who you were?
Yes, ma'am. Jeff Wilson, Assistant Director-
You did. I'm sorry, Jeff. I was distracted. I just like hearing Jeff's new title. That's what it is.
What is preventative maintenance? That's where we go in and set schedules, monthly, semi-annually, yearly, through all the different pieces of equipment. There's a multitude of different pieces of equipment, different schedules, a lot of trackability. I could go on forever. I'll try to be brief.
But one of the, one of the things I do wanna, to mention for, in terms of preventative maintenance for Jeff, is that previously, as city schools experienced, or as operations experienced budget cuts, there was not as much preventative maintenance that were, that was being done. And so we were hitting our buildings, probably a third of the portfolio, more than a year ago, we were hitting a third of the portfolio doing preventative maintenance work. As of the last year plus, we have been hitting the buildings once around. And if you talk about it from an industry standard, we should hit, be hitting our buildings twice. So we are impacted and limited by the budget. And so as we, as we increase funding for operations, a lot of that money is going to preventative maintenance and bringing us to a place where we should be addressing our buildings twice a year.
Next slide kinda gives a brief of where we place items. Boilers in the summer through the fall, chillers in the early winter through the spring. This is where it touches base back to where we touched every classroom this year in a 12-month cycle, every school. And previously, it was 30 to 40 schools per year. The HVAC PM and changeover process on Slide 7. This is where we're at right now in this period of October 15th, typically which took about four weeks to change over. This kinda outlines all the things that we have to do there. It's not all of them. There's more entailed with that, which is why, right now, we have the schools calling on certain evenings, because typically in October, we, we kinda maintain a 65, 70-degree range during the cycle. We've been a little chilly at the beginning right now. We'll, we'll have the same in the spring when we hit April 15th for the chiller season.
And so one of the things I just want to add is that as we submit our requests, our budget requests for preventative maintenance, a lot of times, I think that people associate it with changing filters, but it's more in-depth than that. And so this is just a layout of some of the different things that are happening. There's a lot of repairs that are being made. When we do preventative maintenance work, repairing, as we show here before, replacing pump motors, some of those different things. And so it's more in-depth. It's also, as Jeff said before, with the schedule, preventative maintenance is something we do on a year period. There's sometimes we've been asked a request, even from individuals from the state, is that, you know, could you have done the preventative maintenance before a particular walkthrough? Preventative maintenance doesn't happen over a two- or three-day period. It's a full-year period with a number of different components within the system.
When the, when the systems are shut down, what does that do to the temperature in buildings?
Well, depending on the outside temperature, it could rise. Like today, the temperature started rising a little more with the systems down. On the chillier days, the temperatures would decrease until we get the systems back online.
So does this mean there's no air or heat in the building period?
Correct. The, the school systems are unlike residential systems, where you can't just turn a switch. They're hydronic systems. When you go from a chiller in operation, 45-degree chilled water in the system, you actually have to have the chiller shut down for a couple of days to let that temperature rise in that hydronic system. And if you turn the boilers on before it rose to, let's say, 70 or 80 degrees in that system, you take a chance on cracking a section. One section could cost as much as $35,000 or $40,000 to replace.
Thanks.
And Jeff, just to clarify, that's not completely unique to our schools or just school systems, is like industrial facilities?
No, no. Hospitals. Most large buildings are hydronic systems.
So the other thing we wanted to point out is how we've been getting, received support over, since January. And so during the legislative session that happened in Annapolis, it starts in January, it concludes around April, there was a lot of push for additional funding and resources for Baltimore City because of some of the challenges that we experienced in January. So we want to give significant thanks and appreciation to Delegate McIntosh, who pushed one of the $15 million funds towards HVAC projects within Baltimore City. And one of the reasons why it was significantly different was that we have never received state support for repairs. There's only been state support for capital replacement projects. And so for $15 million, when you are doing a capital replacement for HVAC system, that probably is probably one big project or two projects. So that funding would have not gone far if it wasn't a repair funding. And so we have, the $15 million is to last over seven years. When we've identified projects, we identified projects in 21 schools, and we will probably expend that fund within three years. The other thing that was, or the other element that was very important about this funding was the fact that we had to receive a waiver. And so in times when we receive capital funds, we have to do a cost share, which means that the city has to, our local support has to be about 7%. So it'd have been 7% of that $15 million. And so we appreciate the IC in granting us the ability to waive the cost share. Also, our design fees are covered under the $15 million, usually for capital dollars. We have to use local dollars to cover design fees. And then the total cost limit for capital projects are about $200,000. Most of our repairs are ranging, as Jeff said, $40,000 to $60,000. So those things were waived for us to have access to those funds.
Lynette, can I just add one thing?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, there were two questions. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I just can add one thing, which is that I agree that we are incredibly appreciative for both Maggie McIntosh's leadership in getting the resources and for all the waiver support we've gotten to get the flexibility to use this. But I also want to make clear here that the $15 million is tiny in comparison to the need. So to support Dr. Sanz Salis' point, we have a $3 billion backlog. So that's .005% of the backlog. I think people hear the number $15 million, and it sounds like a lot of money, so they think that that's surely gonna address the problem. But it is a small, small percentage of the problem. So I put it into the kind of terms of your own house. If you had got an estimate for your house of a $30,000 repair to replace your roof, the equivalent of, of the amount of money we got is the equivalent of getting $150 to, towards your $30,000 roof. So you might caulk, I don't know what you would caulk with that. You could buy some caulk.
Tarpe.
But you, you could buy tarpe. There's not much you could do with that. So just to be clear, it's a big gap.
Commissioner Hassan, and then Commissioner Frank.
So my question was, was actually back more around the preventative maintenance strategies and the role of the onsite, in-school janitorial engineer and, and their, that sort of team. Do, do they have an opportunity for professional development, to learn the systems, and a checklist of those things that would be like homeowner things, the changing of the furnace filters, the turning off the water in the winter, the bleeding of the sprinkler systems? Are they engaged in that to help defer some of the load off the central engineering team? And if so, can you just share some of that so we know? And if not, can we talk about how we can make that happen?
Generally, right now, the, unlike other jurisdictions, our custodial staff is mainly, primarily to custodial staff's responsibilities. They, some of them have elevated to become over to our engineering, mechanical side. However, for the majority of them that are either contractual or still BCPS employees, they don't have the, I would say right now, the qualities or the training of a, to do the work. They're more concentrated on the cleaning and the preparation of the classrooms for greater environmental learning. But there is an opportunity for future-
I mean, I, I don't expect them to be engineers, but I change my filters in my house. You know, so it seems that that would be an opportunity for growth and professional development and triaging within the union system in order to build and then investment and, you know, and, and moving from so many contractuals to more permanent employees to help build the franchisement and the pride of ownership that then may even result in cleaner schools and things like that.
And I, and we've had conversations, again, it's triaging with the union, within the union system. And so we have had some progress in terms of more on our, with our repair team side. Previously, before, our repair team was doing a significant number of custodian-related tasks. And we were able to see that when we implemented our computerized management maintenance system. And so we provided communications and worked with the union's representatives in order to get them to do more of those custodian-related works that were related to changing light bulbs, changing ceiling tiles. And so in terms of the HVAC discussion, that's more triaging with this, with the, within the existing structure.
Commissioner Frank.
Just a very quick question. The source of funds that was from the state, the supplemental funds, is that the same funding source that's used for regular school funding, capital funding?
So that's, this was separate from the capital funding. So-
Is it general, general funds, or?
So, no, it was still capital, it was still capital funds. But it wasn't, it was separate from our pot. So generally, that $30 million, that $30 million or $25 to $30 million that we receive in capital dollars, we were still receive those dollars, we received a little bit more. And this was a, more of like a supplemental.
My, my question is, that's helpful. My, my question is, do you know if the source of the supplement money came out of the same pot that funds our capital dollars? Or did it come out of what might be called general funds? I'm just curious.
No, so it did. It came out of the same pot for capital.
Thank you.
And so I'm gonna talk briefly about the additional support that we received from, from the board. And so there, the commitment in 2014 was the additional $3 million. And so this is just a breakdown of how that $3 million has an impact for HVAC-related budgets. And so mechanical services, we have 21st Century, which is also mechanical services. And engineering receive about $11 million of that full, those full funds that's dedicated towards improving preventative maintenance and FTEs for, for HVAC, HVAC support. Since July, we have added on new staff, Jeff Wilson, as our Assistant Director, which has been very helpful for the team. We have added on stationary boiler maintenance workers, which was something that we wanted to provide additional support in the field. When we talked about January, about our capacity limitations, this stationary boiler maintenance workers provide that. They also provide changing some of the filters, so we're not relying on contractual support for that. We had some added technicians, and then we're looking to still feel additional boiler maintenance workers, project supervisors, and other tech positions.
So in the reorganization between mechanical services and engineering, Dr. Washington spoke earlier how we had engineers at a rate of one to 12 per 15 buildings, which really meant that engineers just spent time all day long, and even on overtime, traveling from building to building just to get an eye on an issue. And then the issues were reverted over to mechanical services for contractual support. What we've done is assigned the engineers one per four buildings. We've brought in the contractual, on-call contractors, which were typically servicing our schools anyways, and assigned one technician per four buildings at the same ratio also. Which, what that does is takes out steps of having to call the contractor, go through their dispatch, wait for them to find a technician, and have them address the technician to one of our sites. This also gets a little bit more familiarity with each technician being in a building. They only have four buildings to be in. So today, we're not getting Tom. Tomorrow, we're not getting George. Next month, we're not getting Ed. We get the same guy day in, day out at four buildings. So they learned a little quirks in the building that maybe a new technician coming in there might have to spend a little more time to troubleshoot, which means he can't get to a next job sooner. So that's part of the restructuring. Building checks, that, that goes into the same thing. They do the building checks, the oil readings and everything, and then they revert back to viable work in the building, including the preventative maintenance, filter changes, belt changes, et cetera. What this does is helps us be a little bit more proactive and reactive, and that's kinda where we're at at this point. Also, what we've done now is bringing in, we, the, the building automation system. It's basically, we're in the monitoring and visual phase of that. We're bringing in sensors. There's a timeline on the next one, but what happens is this allows us to see the school's temperature at 5:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. We actually have it set up to give critical alerts to different points, whether the temperatures get below a certain temperature, pumps not working, things of that nature. So this is gonna help us on weekends, late-night hours, so we can get a head start to the building prior to the school opening and somebody coming in there. Is it gonna happen every time? Maybe, maybe not. But, you know, power outages, you lose functionality, things like that. But this gives us a better handle on, on seeing things from a distance. And the next slide, 13, kinda shows the timeline of where we're at. In March, we brought the virtual servers online. The virtual servers are where all these buildings report to, so we can actually see it live. And then, so on, right now, we're in the phase of putting the sensors in. Hopefully by the end of December, we'll have a good portion of our buildings in with sensors. Page 14 kinda gives you an idea of what we can see. Now, this is, this, this is based on-
When you say, give me one second. When you say a good portion of the buildings, is that an approximate?
I am shooting for 110 or so buildings by the end of December is what I'm hoping.
Okay. Thanks.
You know, everything's gotta come, you know, what we're doing right now is kinda like a six-month window in the normal world to get done. And we're getting it done in short order. So that, that's the goal I have set. The next page, 14, is actually what is, is, is a more building- The next page, fourteen, is actually what is, is, is a more building automated orientated, but this is what it allows us to see. It can see boilers on, temperatures in zones of rooms. It's a little bit hard to see on there, but um, when we do zones, you actually know what your room temperature is because it's the, it's the accumulation of all the rooms coming back in the return, and we have return air duct sensors which tells what, what the temperature is in that area.
So, quick question. I had noticed in the upper right-hand corner that Johnson Controls is the company that we're contracting with. Are they doing all of our automation or?
We, we have, they have our virtual server. The virtual server was based on what our, we had infrastructure out there, and they had the majority of the portions of the infrastructure. Forty or so schools in the beginning. What we did is the sensors are going in through all of our on-call contractors, broken down. Each one of our contractors, there's five of them, they all have a portion of schools, they're all installing them, but it all reports back to the virtual server, which is one, one point, one focal point, so that we can get the critical alerts at one point instead of having to monitor five different systems. All the other systems can also be integrated into this, just so we have a viewpoint.
So then, say, I don't know, Company Water Glass, that's another one of our contractors. Say, on our virtual server, we identify an issue with Company Water Glass's product in a building. Does Johnson Control then do the maintenance, or do we contact or have an M O U with installation so that we have the experts in that field with that material?
We would have generally our in-house engineer, technician, or our on-call contractor. Most of those are the first point of triage for that. If it becomes a problem for the software portion of that, then that company, train, Siemens or whoever, will be brought in under that umbrella. But ninety to ninety-five, actually ninety-five percent of the problems you have in the buildings, even if it's, it's not necessarily a controller or software glitch, it's a item that requires hands-on manual resets, breakers turned back on. The automation systems don't do that. You still have to have a body in the field in order to take care of the issues that the software doesn't normally typically go bad.
And, and so then we go back to the original distributor or manufacturer to be able to do that rather than a?
Well, our on-call contractor. If it's an actuator in the building, they can change that. We don't need the control company to change an actuator. We don't need a control company to change a damper motor. It's when you get a glitch in the software system, then that train would be the one to fix their glitch. Siemens would be the one to fix theirs. Johnson Control would be the ones on their end.
On the, on the, okay, perfect, thanks.
So in order to address more of the public transparency, we're right now beta testing and working on a dashboard. And so the dashboard basically is going to provide the building statuses. And so we have, just to just give you a scenario, we have green, blue, and also red. The green represents a building that would be open and it would be fine. So if we had a very cold day and there, it had an impact on a number of different facilities, the, someone in the public would be able to pull up this dashboard, and they would say, green buildings are buildings that are fine. They are going to be open. A blue building is a building that may be dealing with a situation, and it's called a critical building. And so at some point, there's a determination that's going to be made whether that facility needs to be closed because something cannot be resolved within a two-hour window. A red building is a building that has an issue that we have determined that is going to take more than two hours for it to be resolved, and so that building is determined that it's going to be closed. Someone can come onto the website, and they could be able to search. They can search it by legislative districts, they can search it by a number of different ways. But again, we're, we're still beta testing this and then hoping to have it ready and available in mid-December. The last point is that we just want to continue to remind everyone that we do have a school closure policy. And this is something that we communicated in January, and so now this is, this is the same thing that we'll be communicating this coming winter, that as temperatures reach below sixty degrees, those are critical for the district, that this is the same process that schools would call in a call center, so the call center, a technician would be dispatched. And that also, that we are, are shooting for the, the system to be resolved within a two-hour window, because if it's not, then that's when a discussion will happen for a closure or early dismissal.
So I'm going to just talk about our computerized maintenance management system, which is the system that we use for managing our work orders for corrective and preventive maintenance. We recently wrote it out to our principals, which is a huge step. We've actually, that allowed us to align to what other districts are doing. For other districts, eighty-five percent of their work orders are submitted by their school personnel. How we've been, we were functioning, one hundred percent of our work orders were inputted by our maintenance staff. And so we're working to reverse that, but it also allows for shared accountability in the health of our facilities. So not only are schools submitting their concerns through this work order system, they're also able to track and see what's going on with those concerns. We, as schools are getting up and using that system, they're already emailing us saying, hey, I submitted this work order, I see that it's in progress, or I submitted it four weeks ago, how come I haven't seen anything? So it allows us to expand our communication and our accountability with the teams that are responsible for performing that work. So what you see here is the principal's view. So they can come in here, the principal and/or their designee, they can come in here and they can create their request, they can track and see what, what was completed, when it was completed. Our teams have the ability to upload photos, videos, documentation, and principals have access to all of that. We made sure to roll out steps on what it looks like when, or what schools should do based upon the type of request that comes in. So there's one process, if it is an emergency or an urgent need, that's always a phone call. It's like nine-one-one. You don't send an email or a text message to nine-one-one, you pick up the phone and call. And so there's a process to that, which also includes during heating and cooling season, calling our facility's command line. And then there are our non-emergency concerns, where there's also a process for that, where the schools submit their work orders. But for minor maintenance repairs, that goes on to a blitz schedule, which is performed by our regional techs, or that is, that is scheduled based upon the department that is responsible for handling that work. And so what we have here on this slide is just what the blitz cycle looks like. So there's an inspection that happens. The week later, a team is supposed to come out and handle the work orders that the school has submitted, and then any additional work that that lead technician may have identified during that inspection. What we learned over the summer is that there wasn't enough clarity on what work happens during a blitz cycle and what doesn't. And so what we've done, when we rolled it out to principals, is to ensure that we help them to understand, this is what you can expect to have done during your blitz week versus what is scheduled outside of that. And a blitz cycle is every six weeks. So, but that's significant for us because we were able to bring that down from eight weeks to six weeks. Last school year, we were on a blitz cycle, but we were every eight weeks. And through feedback from the ground and even our key performance indicators, which we're responsible for in our M O U, we had to bring down our response time. So at least we've been able to get it down from that sixty days to a forty-five day turnaround.
And so this last two slides, it talks about our external advisory support, and I think that this was something that was very important for us. There was a work group, working group that was established after January that brought together a number of different professionals in the field that were well-known folks to just see our process and procedures. I think that a lot of times when people observe from the outside what's happening for Baltimore City, there's questions about capacity, our ability to understand what, our resources, inefficient use of resources. And I think that the advisory team was our ability to be able to communicate with some external folks to say, this is what we're doing, and does it make sense? One of the interesting things is that every time we did this presentation to these various groups of people, there was always a silence. And the silence wasn't followed by, wow, you guys have no clue of what you're doing. It was followed generally by, wow, if I had that budget with those type of resources, I don't know what my facilities would look like. And so it just showed our team that we were taking the limited resources and the capacity that we had, and we were stretching it to the limit, and we were making it work, even though, as Dr. Santalisa said at the beginning of his presentation, you really can't fix something when you just have, you don't have many resources to fix it, right? And so we don't have resources to invest in capital as we should, as other school systems, as industry standards. We're not going to make the situation go away. But it was nice to be able to get the validation from external groups of people looking at our work. And so we discussed structural process roles, staffing support. We looked at the blitz process that Monique talked about. We are also going through the discussion around alternative financing solutions, and then even reviewing our vertical package units, that's something that we're implementing in a number of schools based off of the governor's mandate to air-conditioned buildings. So this is the representation of that group. We also want to highlight Claire Johnson, who is supporting us in this work. She's helping to coordinate the external advisory group and exploring with a number of different organizations, other financial funding options for the school system. And I think that one of the other groups that we want to also recognize, and we felt to put them on the presentation, was Frederick County Public School System. Frederick County has been helpful for us for the last two and a half years of how we've been looking at reviewing and changing our process and systems. They've been helpful with the school due process, the computer, computerized management maintenance system. They have been our go-to folks because they have implemented the system over a three-year period of time. They are like the gurus in the field. And so they have been our go-to folks about how we implement, just testing and checking on how they did it with their schools and their principals. They also have talked with us about their building automa, automization implementation process, and that has been very helpful for us, understanding some of the lessons learned that they've experienced and how we addressed them. And then lastly, they've been very helpful providing, providing round tables, where they've been bringing other school systems together to help us grapple with some of the, the issues that we've been dealing with. And so I want to make sure that I also recognize them.
Dr. Washington and team, I don't want you to hear silence after your presentation because I think you presented something that is very much best practice under considerable duress. It's more than a Band-Aid, but it's not the major surgery that we need to get things done. The only thing I would add to the, to the presentation is, and it's, I know all in your minds and hearts, this is about the experience of the kids and teachers, and this minimizes the disruption in their learning, and is going to, going to have an effect on their learning through the school year in, in, in ways that I don't think we can measure. The only, the only other thing I will say, I remember there was a lot of media last year about the boilers and other issues. I'm not sure if there was a lot of media about this, or there will be, but this really needs to be presented to people who cared about last year and who had things to say about last year and asked hard questions about last year. And I think this really answers many of them, or most of them. So I hope the media and others that, that ask these questions get the benefit, benefit of the same presentation that we got today. So congratulation. I feel very comfortable about the direction we're going in. Thank you.
Commissioner McFadden.
Dr. Santalisa, thank you. Does the state take into consideration our failing infrastructure and the lack of, or the, the lack of funding, that funding gap when we're asking for waivers because we have to close?
So, let me just make sure I understand, you mean waivers from required days in school for students?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, let's put it this way, when we make the submissions for individual schools, I can't recount a time where they have not given us the, given us the waiver due to that. You know, they don't, they don't necessarily say it the way you just said it with that kind of direct connection, but I can't, unless someone on staff can, I can't remember a time when they have denied a waiver for students based on, you know, days lost because of building infrastructure issues.
Any other questions or comments from the, from board?
Thank you. I know this was tremendous work on your part and I, and continues, but it's a fantastic team and I'm very proud of, of what you've been doing, and we will continue to support. I hope that everyone heard the opening comments as well as what you've been saying, because as we move into, is it January, February, I don't know, whenever it's, whenever that season starts, you know, the need is still there, and our argument can't stop around the capital and the facilities needs that we have for our, our students. So thank you again.
Good evening, John Land, Executive Director of Operations.
Good evening, Alice Watson, Director of Health and Safety.
Lynette Washington, interim Chief Operating Officer.
Good evening, Chief Ham School Police.
Tonight, we're going to update you on some of our emergency preparedness and talk a little more in depth about the Alice training. One of the purposes of Health and Safety is to support schools to be prepared in emergencies with responses, to protect staff, students, and the community. There are three areas that we focus on to do that in Health and Safety. The development of comprehensive safety plans for schools, the practicing of emergency drills, and training of school staff. Health and Safety's responsibility is to ensure that students and administrators prepare for an emergency before it happens, have the information that, Health and Safety has information for school administrators to find out about preparing for emergencies and hazards, to have training on how to develop safety plans, and have updated information regarding school safety. We, Health and Safety trains school administrators to develop a comprehensive safety plan, and that safety plan drives what that school does throughout the school year for its emergency drills and its preparation. So it's developed to address contingencies of man-made emergencies such as fire and chemical hazards. And the purpose is the plan, I'm sorry, the plan contains the annual schedule for drills, the KUMAR required drills. Ms. Watson, our Director of Health and Safety this year, proposed a schedule for the school drills that actually reduced the number of days required by schools to do drills. So we're able to reduce the number of days from thirteen and sixteen days down to five and nine. And by, our target is by December this year is to have all of our emergency drills completed at schools, and then to have some of the fire drills and a bus evacuation drill completed, and the remaining drills to be completed in May. So that was a schedule that Ms. Watson created, taking the similarities between some of the drills, like lockdown, shelter, and alert status and reverse evacuation. There were a lot of similarities between the drills, and so-
Mr. Land, could you also just speak to the fact of whether or not the lessening of drills equates the lessening of preparation? Because oftentimes, the public will hear there are less drills at the time that we know the context in which we're living requires more preparation. So can folks, how, how can folks be assured that this reduction does not signal a lack of preparedness?
Well, the Health and Safety staff and school police have trained school administrators in these drills and how to conduct them, and they are part of the plan. So they're, the drills oversight the school year, the lockdown drill between Health and Safety staff and school police, to, to ensure that, you know, that there's some fidelity between what's envisioned and what's actually taking place.
And I, and I just want to add that some of the, one of the reasonings for combining some of the drills is because there's a lot of duplication, right? And so if whatever went for, and if you can say two that may have been overlapped, there was a-
Well, the lockdown and shelter-
Right.
And alert and reverse evacuation.
Right. So there was a lot of significant overlap within those drills. And so a lot, we- And so a lot, these drills were spread out, so that it was having an impact on instruction time. And so we, when we did a review of the drills, we said, were these drills addressing all the various components that were required? And if they were, then we said that these drills could be combined. So they're really not missing out on anything, it's just that the duplication, we combined the drills so that we wouldn't have to be having all of these drills spread out impacting school time, and they were duplicative.
Can I ask?
So I have a clarifying question on this slide. Is this intending that schools complete their first round of drills by December or in December? And if so, what are we doing for kindergartners, first graders, first-year high school, the places where they may never have done a drill in that building before up until December? Are we at risk?
It's by December.
And are we strongly encouraging September?
Yes. The schedule that we preset for schools, and we sent out a notification to the school principals prior to the school year, that we had amended the drill schedule to ensure that the most critical drills were being done at the beginning of the school year. So in September, three of the emergency drills are being performed along with a fire drill. So we have the lockdown drill, the reverse evacuation drill, and the shelter in place drill, being the most frequent drills that schools have to do throughout the year anyway. So to ensure that those schools, that all schools know what the procedures and the processes are for the most critical drills, they were put at the head of the schedule in September. So each month throughout the school year, we are anticipating where principals are to be and to ensure mid-year compliance, and then full compliance by May.
Okay. Since this is the primary way that parents and families and community members are going to get that information, this chart looks like the first September, October, November are at risk, and that we're doing the last one right before we send them home for summer. So you might want to give us actually all that information.
So why don't we, in the appendix, we could include the schedule that shows when the drills happen? This is a summary of what happens by the end of the first semester.
Again, because I'm sure it's happening, and I'm sure it's great, but if I look at this as a parent, I'm worried about my kid the first three months of school.
Okay.
If I could also add, excuse me, to the CEO's point, we're doing something more intensive than we've ever done before. We're going to roll out where in each CLN, we're going to actually monitor and do a scenario of the lockdown drills, just to ensure that the school is in compliance with what they're supposed to be doing. And we've never done that before. So that's just something new that we're trying to roll out now. And each principal in that learning community or administrator will come to one school in the CLN, Community Learning Network, and be able to observe to ensure that we're all on the same page. Rather than them just trying to figure it out, looking in a book and trying to figure it out, we're going to actually go through the scenarios with them.
So they'll observe the school conducting the drill, as well as your team giving feedback on the drill? So they'll be able to see exactly how the school did it, as well as any feedback you had about how to improve it.
And then have after-action debriefing about it.
So I might be misunderstanding this chart. Does this propose that there are 21 drills through the school year?
There are actually up to 16 drills per school year, individual drills, depending on the fire drills.
So I took the higher, so it would be the lower?
Yes.
Of the two to three and three to five? I just, I remember back, you know, high school, we didn't have more than five or six a year. This is currently best practice, and what's recommended is to have that many drills a year.
Well, in 2012, the state and the fire marshal added the six emergency drills.
Okay.
Prior to that, it was 10 fire drills that schools only had to do. When the six emergency drills were mandated, the number of fire drills did drop from five to eight, depending on whether a school was fully automatic with sprinkler systems. So in addition to the fire drills, the six emergency drills, there are two bus evacuations that are transportation regulations.
So the total number is...
So there are a lot.
Yeah.
So the compressed schedule doesn't minimize what schools have to do. It just reduces the number of dates whereby they can get the drills done.
So it's roughly 14, 16 a year?
Yes.
And how do we ensure that the principals are actually doing it 14 or 16 times a year?
They entered the verification online that the drills have been performed.
And is that what we find with our principals, that they're complying with this?
This schedule helps us to ensure compliance much better than prior years, because we're meeting mid-year compliance a lot earlier. And so from January through May, all they have to concentrate are on the fire drills. In prior years, it was a hard copy checklist, so we were trying to get caught up in making certain that they met full requirements.
If I could just, Alice, ask Chief Davis to also just comment on kind of where principals are in this whole thing, because I think part of the question from Commissioner Frank was also kind of the readiness and what's going on with principals specifically.
So myself, and while I was out, Mr. Achan, have been meeting with really every single principal to go over last year's kind of performance. One of the things we emphasize is making sure that the fire drills are done, right? And I have data on every single school. If they missed one, we review why and make sure that we've got a different schedule for this year. The vast, vast majority of them were, you know, doing all of theirs last year when we reviewed the data, regardless of whatever the drill was. So I've got good confidence that it's happening, especially because this year, we have it really detailed out month by month, like Alice and the others were saying.
I just wanted to say something.
Go ahead.
That's fine. I actually had a fire drill today, so that's great. But I just wanted to say that these drills have been going out actually about a week or last week ago. We had a lockdown drill that was for a shooting. So they are carrying out specifically at my school, and we've actually done two fire drills already. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
We also worked, Health and Safety worked with Communications to develop a brochure that was given out to principals, teachers, and staff on the six COMAR required drills that you see up there, the lockdown, shelter in place, alert status, reverse evacuation, evacuation, severe weather, and drop cover and hold. And now I'd like to turn it over to Chief Ham to talk about the Alice training.
Let me just be clear that we follow all the state mandated drills, and Alice training is like a concept that has been going on. So the training that we've done for administrators has been for informational purposes only. It's not something that we are rolling out at this time, but because most of the country is moving toward Alice, we wanted to make the administrators aware as we went over the state mandated lockdown drills. So I just wanted to be clear with that. Alice stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Count, and Evacuate. The difference, the real difference between Alice and what we're doing with the state mandated drills is the counterpart. You go to the next one. And basically, what that means is, we still follow all the state mandated requirements, but if we can evacuate, they have what they call counter techniques that go along with Alice. And counter means if you can't hide, if you can't get away from wherever the attacker is, if you have nowhere to go, then you counter by everyone in the classroom attacking the person that's trying to bring harm in the classroom. So it's a concept, it's not something that we're asking principals to do, it's just something that we're informing them of.
I just have, I just have one question. I guess the level engagement, you talk about principals being engaged, but what about, say, an eight-year-old comes home to his parents saying, "We had a lockdown today." Is there some preemptive communication with the teachers and the parents to say, "We have these drills, they can be sporadic, don't be worried because your kid may come home," eight-year-old saying, "We had a lockdown," and they not understanding what a lockdown is?
Communications sent out a letter or to parents prior to the school year notifying them of these emergency drills, and the drills that will be performed during the school year, such as the lockdown drill and the reverse evacuation drill and the alert status drill, drills that may cause some people anxiety. Those types of drills were given notification to the parents as well as the staff. And when the lockdown drills are performed, the teachers are provide notice in advance so that they can work with their children in an age-appropriate way to lessen any fears or anxieties that they may have.
Communications also provided a packet of suggested letters that schools could send home when the drills occurred, to your point, so that that night they could send home something with the family to say, "Today, this drill happened, you might need to..." So they have that, those resources.
Chief, so the Alice training is, is it training, or is it just information being given to principals? And is this perhaps like a pilot in a sense? Are we going to decide on implementing Alice training system? Why is it going to come as, and do we have to pay for it if we were to choose to use this, Alice?
It is a fee associated with it, but at this time, we have to follow what COMAR says that we have to do. And using Alice, that's not in compliance with COMAR, but it's a concept that other systems are using throughout the country. So really, it's just information...
And throughout the state.
Yeah, yeah. It's for information purposes right now. We're really trying to make sure that they, that all principals know, and all schools know, how to properly conduct the drills that the state is requiring us to do. Now, I think down the road is something that we can think about, but we want to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing the right way before we move into something different that's not in compliance with what the state is asking us to do or mandating us to do.
This, Slide nine, is about the training that's taken place this school year in August, emergency plans and the COMAR requirements training, the critical response, and the School Emergency Management Guide training, of course, the Alice training with the school administrators, and then a crisis support team training. And this is our upcoming trainings. We'll continue to train when we can at citywide principal leadership meetings, and we're also developing an online module for training that anyone can access whenever they need to. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So I just want to thank everybody. One of the things that staff is running to get now is also a copy of a guide that the team worked on with Communications for every member of the school community to have a reference guide that was easy, kind of, you know, easy to refer to, not a big binder that folks can carry with them, that is a guide to what to do in various emergency situations. So we will make sure we get copies to all of the board when those come down. But that was also part of this effort to really streamline, go deep in key areas where we needed to. And a lot of the consolidation that the team described has enabled us to go deep in things like the Alice training, like getting, actually getting out to school sites and focusing on the depth of knowledge rather than just kind of a compliance check-the-box approach. So I want to really thank the team for their work in this area and for, again, going deep instead of just kind of trying to cover all the bases to say that they were covered. So we'll make sure the board gets copies of all of those, and thank you to you all for your work.
Next, we have a presentation on the proposed academic calendar for school year 2019, 2020, already? 2020.
Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Santalisis. I am James Torrance. I'm the Staff Specialist for Strategic Compliance. This evening, I'm presenting the proposed academic calendar for school year 1920. To give you background information, the school calendar has been drafted in compliance with the 2017, 2018 school year in accordance to the Governor's Executive Order, which says schools must start after Labor Day and end by June 15th, but also takes in consideration other obligations the district has. In constructing the calendar, we look at guiding principals, which are maximizing instructional time, making sure that we have time for professional development and professional learning. Also, make sure it makes sense for families, as well as observe observant states for multiple faves, and consider key windows for testing, such as AP and PRC. As required by contractual requirements, we have 10 professional development days. We also have three parent-teacher conferences. One is inclusive of back-to-school night, and then we have windows within this calendar built in. Also, we have two breaks that we provide. In terms of our legal requirements, which is both by the education articles and COMAR, we must have a calendar that is complying with 180 days and 1,080 hours, and that a school day must be a minimum of three hours to be counted as a school day, and we may not open on state holidays or Saturdays or Sundays. Also, New Song Academy is one of our year-round schools, which is technically exempt from the executive order, as well as new to this year is that we must identify a certain number in clement weather days, and the state requires that we use those days prior to using the five discretionary days beyond June 15th. In terms of it, we also have legal holidays, which are inclusive of Thanksgiving, the day after, the Friday before Easter, and the Monday after, as well as, as you can see, our break. Our one break is required by law, which is from Christmas Eve to, excuse me, January 1st. Also, I want to highlight that we do have a primary election in 2020 in April, so that shortened one of our days as well. Just want to propose that we do not have the current testing windows yet from MSD, so they cannot be included in the draft. In terms of the proposed calendar, staff will return on August 27th. School starts on September 3rd because Labor Day is September 2nd. Spring break will be April 6th through April 13th. School would end for students on the 15th of June and for staff on June 16th. And as we told the board last year, that we would come with an inclement weather scenario for, built into our calendar, which would be President's Day, two days of spring break. And then from there, we move into the five discretionary days after using those days.
Question? May I? Commissioner Chin, if the required holidays by COMAR are here, how can we ask for, it's just a question that I would like, how could we ask for President's Day if it's one of the required holidays?
So by law, we have to observe it originally in our calendar, but if we needed to recover because of the limited number of days that we can actually use, we can actually request from MSD the ability to open up on that day. It's one of the holidays that we can waive once we're into the school year. But until we enter the school year, we can't. Thank you. No problem. In terms of, we outlined the actual 10 contractual days here, again, starting with our traditional four days in the beginning of the school year. If you notice, at the end of the school year, consistent, we'll have a, we've lost our February Professional Development Day and moved it to the end of June, where we allow for closing and also planning for it in our school level. In terms of, we outlined both the no school, the days that we identified for no school for students, as well as district office staff as well. And you'll see, indicated in green... And you'll see indicated in green, with a green asterisk, the days that, the time periods in which we're going to, would use for some of our recovery. And then in red with the asterisk is the days that were required by law to have as holidays. In terms of it, we also, we also determine when we have professional development days where there's half-day for parent-teacher conferences and also we provide windows in the other periods of the school year. We also have outlined a perfect 45-day quarters for the next school year. And then also, we have tentative monthly early releases. This is from, this is being built into our current calendar for the school year. Notice that we put tentative because we want to make sure we get community feedback on the effectiveness of it and whether it is worth it for it, because we want to be positive in understanding whether or not this is the best move for next school year as well. And we've had them built in the calendar, so families are aware of them, just in case. In terms of calendar challenges, as I explained to the student government earlier, that we understand that for students who are participating in dual enrollment, you more than likely will be two weeks ahead of our actual schedule. So in terms of the school-level support that we have for those students, they will be lagging for two weeks because we understand that students will have to plan and actually schedule for when they are able to take the courses at our participating community colleges as well as the coursework when they begin the school year with us. Also, we have to understand that we lose four instructional days at minimum every school year with this shift and that Labor Day can shift from anywhere from the second to the seventh and even the ninth, if you look in outer years. Also, we, we understand the research on summer learning loss and the reality that has for our students and also understanding that it does not allow for planning if we use spring break as tentative days depending on waivers or whether if we use them or not. In terms of timeline, September, we drafted internal review. And then this week, we're definitely reaching out to our organizations. That will be at PCAP on Thursday, Student Congress today. We've reached out to other organizations. CCAC is getting, is gathering feedback from their membership. One of the, and tonight, as of right now, it is now public on the website for the public to provide feedback directly to an email account where someone will be, namely me, able to reply with direct questions and answers. And that is all I have for you.
I, I have one question, and I understand when you listed the challenges, but are we, are we having any conversation about the possibility of helping students with the transportation if that's an issue for those who are a part of, in dual enrollment?
So the transportation piece isn't the issue. It's more so, it's more so planning and supporting students when they're, the rigor of both the work that they'll be completing during the school year-
Okay.
-as well as-
So for those students that may be receiving, you know, who use public transportation, they would still have the reduced, okay, I was just, I didn't understand when you said the transportation piece. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, just, just a reminder to what you said at the end, that this is now posted and so you'll be getting, can take some feedback if folks want to send it. Thank you. Okay, we have a portfolio recommendation.
And as they come, Commissioner Chinia, if it's all right, I just wanted to hold up so that folks here, although we don't have as many people left, but it's okay, can see our emergency preparedness staff guide. We've distributed this to all schools. If you, if your school still does not have a set for every teacher, let us know and you'll see it's just a quick guide. And again, I just want to give staff credit for the real quick turnaround and the great work that was done for just a kind of quick, easy guide. And I would be remiss if I did not say that some of the inspiration and shove for this came from our very own Commissioner Bundima, who probably doesn't even remember now, but she said a while ago, is there a way to kind of have the information in one place that's easy for folks? And that one question and staff's hard work really led to this, so I want to thank her as well. Yes. Good, good.
Since, since we're circling up before we move on, I was just having a side conversation here with Commissioner McFadden, thinking about the challenges of the dual-enrolled students and wondering if there isn't some way we could engage a community partner, since apparently all you have to do is say it once and it happens. Or that's the tone today, yes? Engage a community, community partner to do what we would consider like a kindergarten roundup, only a dual enrollment roundup and bring all the, I mean, it can't be 1,000 kids, bring them all together in a space to, you know, at B triple C or, or wherever to, to problem-solve, answer questions, walk through, this is what it's going to look like when you go to college your first day. Be that support network to help keep them following through the cracks when they don't have their homeroom teacher or their college bond advisor to go back to right after the experience and say, help, I don't know what I was doing. So we think there's got to be some, and we could make big fanfare around it and caravan together to, to the college or something ought to be able to happen to fill this need and publicize how many great students we've got doing great things.
From the Office of New Initiatives, Dr. Brooks from Special Education, they will, both Angela and Trevor won't introduce themselves formally, but I just want to thank them. And this work is, I think, some, the hardest work in the district. It requires the ability to not only analyze but hold mass amounts of information, make sure that you are engaging the folks in question. And I will say that our renewal process is probably one of the most thorough anywhere and it is due in large part to the work that staff does on this and the level and standard of excellence that they hold for themselves. It's not externally driven. It's not because of me. I think it's because they just are committed to making sure that there's quality schooling options for all young people in Baltimore City. And this is work that's not always popular, but it is work that is necessary to ensure that our young people are getting the education they deserve. So I want to thank the team that works on this year in and year out. I'll turn it over to you, Angela.
Thank you. So I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
I'm Trevor Roberts. I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education.
Just before we start, I want to acknowledge that there are a lot of, like, in particular, a key partner in this work is Chief Jones and her team, OAA, is a big part of this work. There's a lot of data they have to crunch. There's a lot of research and analysis. There's a lot of back and forth. So I wanted to make sure too that I publicly acknowledge all of the hard work that her team puts into making this a strong process. It wouldn't be possible. As well as like finance also plays a key role and had to turn around, throw on analysis in a short amount of time for some of this.
Okay, I just want to start by giving a quick overview of the renewal process. Renewal is the way that city schools looks and evaluates operator-led schools. We look at schools every three to five years, depending on their contract lengths. Some key things that we look at during renewal, according to Policy IHB, are student achievement, school climate, financial management and governance. Last year, Banneker Blake went through the operator renewal process. They were granted a one-year conditional renewal. And at the request of the operator, they have now asked for their recommendation to be presented earlier than a normal process. So the normal timeline is that a school is going through renewal, submit a application in September. From September to October, the operator-led advisory board takes a look at the applications and makes their assessments. Recommendations are presented to the, to the board. The normal schedule is for recommendations to go November 13th. Again, Banneker has asked for an expedited review, so we're bringing the recommendation today. Operators have the opportunity to talk to the board in a work session. On the normal cycle will be November 20th and the board will vote on renewal recommendations. For the normal cycle will be January 9th. And for Banneker, we're bringing the vote for November 13th. I missed an earlier part of the meeting. Why did Banneker ask for an early review?
They, so it's something under addressed later in the slide. One of their conditions is around acquiring a facility. And so what they've indicated has been a challenge is having a one-year contract makes it challenging to get financing, to get, you know, entities that are looking to help loan money to, schools are looking for longer-term contracts. So they're asking that you review and vote, make a decision earlier so that, with the hopes of if you approve them to go forward, then they can move forward on acquiring a facility. So a couple of things I just noticed on the slide, just for the public, and we'll update it. So November 13th is the normal cycle when things go public. The vote is January 8th. I just want to be clear on the record about those things. So for Banneker Blake and one other school received a one-year conditional. So for schools that receive a conditional, it's not an application that we're reviewing. We're reviewing their status on those conditions, whether or not they met those conditions and where they are in those conditions. So that's what we're going to present tonight. The conditions arose out of the findings from the last year of renewal in that there were four kind of key areas that are, that we have been monitoring. So special education, operations, financial management and acquisition of a facility. So in the, so this, this information updates have been shared and so this reflects the recommendation of the charter and operator-led advisory school board is to non-renew. This contract based on the updates, based on where they are in terms of conditions. So this presentation is a summary of some of the major findings, but it's not all of the issues that we found. So in the area of special education, so the findings are that they have not met the conditions. So the can, the conditions were they needed to successfully implement each goal in their special education plan and they did make some progress there, but that also included maintaining compliance with special education requirements as well as ensuring all staff and new staff receive trainings and ongoing professional development in areas identified in the plan as well as new needs that arise based on student need or teacher need. And the area of special, special education in particular, there's, the operators demonstrated a lack of understanding of his responsibilities as it relates to students with disabilities and students with 504 plans. So there continues to be challenges in those areas. I'm going to let Dr. Brooks share some key examples of challenges we've seen in the area of special education.
So we see that there continues to be a lack of understanding around scheduling for students that are receiving special education and related services as there's been inconsistency in the scheduling aligning with the actual supports and services that have been documented in the students' IEPs. And therefore, we've had to then schedule and hold free, appropriate public education meetings, FAP meetings for the students. Staff from the Office of Special Education is continuing to work very closely with the school to make sure that these schedules are being developed to ensure that there's an alignment of the services and to ensure that all services for students receiving special education and related services are implemented for students receiving special education and related services, as well as for students that have 504 plans. As of effective October the 22nd, all staff still had not received those 504 plans for those students. So we have continued to have increased monitoring for staff at the school as well as put in additional training sessions for the entire staff that will actually take place on November 4th. And we've increased the amount of support from one staff member to multiple staff members. We've also worked collaboratively with the staff to develop an action plan, a special education action plan, that we have identified key areas collaboratively with the school to monitor effective implementation of services and supports for students with disabilities, as well as ensuring that students are placed in receiving services in areas of the building that is integrated with their typical peers. So to ensure that there is no segregation of students that are receiving special education and related services.
So the Office of Special Education, just kind of in summary, has to provide support beyond regular support to ensure the operator remedies, the new findings that the office has substantiated when it comes to students with disabilities and students who receive 504 plans. I'm just going to pause. I don't know if there's any questions here.
Sorry, I turned it off instead of on. How many FAP meetings have you had to schedule at this point?
We've had to schedule 49 FAP meetings.
Thank you. Forty-nine meetings over what time period?
Over the course of this school year.
This school year, starting September.
You're saying September?
Yes.
Okay.
Deb, does that represent 100% of their students with IEPs?
Yes, it does.
Want to make sure that Commissioner Bundima was asking, 49 represents 100% of the students who are receiving services, special education services.
Commissioner Chinia, are we able to hear back at any point? I know that there's a, a training that you have scheduled for them coming up. Are we still able to hear in, because that's a lot, that's a lot. Are we able to hear any progress after that training happens? Are we able to get an update on that?
Yes, I can provide an update.
And you've provided additional support from your office to that school?
From my office, we've provided an additional 50-plus hours, both myself as well as additional staff from my office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frank?
Last year's conditional approval was contingent on identifying a facility. Is that correct or?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to get to that later, but yes.
Oh, you're getting to that? I'm sorry.
One of the, yeah, so one of the, where we are right now, one of the key conditions was to adjust to concern, address the concerns that we found last year in the area of special education and to not have new findings to, to be, remain compliant with special ed.
I'm sorry, and did, have the teachers received the 504 plans yet? Do we know whether or not the teachers have them?
As of, excuse me, October 22nd, the majority of the teachers have, but all of the teachers had not as of October 22nd. So we are still in the process, as I've sent staff over, to ensure that every teacher will have a copy of the 504 plans as well as related service providers for those students that have counseling on, as a part of their 504 plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the next area of conditions is around operational practices. So in particular, the operator was to be, remain compliant with federal, key federal and state requirements, including district, key district requirements like HE rules around collective bargaining, around use of staff. They were also to provide a plan to ensure that they had stable leadership and that that leader was being developed by the school. In this area, we're also finding that the conditions have not been met. So the operator failed to address challenges in the, in those, those key kind of operational issues. For example, they violated FERPA by having operator staff without proper credentials attend meetings where confidential student and staff information was shared. They violated HE requirements, particularly in the area of collective bargaining, by having an unqualified staff member perform functions of an assistant principal without the proper qualifications. They failed to ensure accurate grade reporting after making changes. Last year, we just- Last year, we discovered that they had changed their master schedule several times. Um, and so they were to ensure that, um, Infinite Campus reflected accurate grades for every student. Um, we found at the end of the year that that had not happened. Um, and, um, as of, um, today, um, they still have not, um, corrected this issue.
Excuse me, Commissioner Reed?
What are, what are the ramifications to the district for them violating these requirements? I mean, is there some kind of disciplinary action against us because they violate and we don't do anything about it?
I mean, there's, there's potential risks, so you have, you have people's personal information being shared with people that's not appropriate. Uh, when it comes to the, the grade reporting, that has impact, has potential impacts on students that we have to figure out. So we don't have accurate grades that can impact students' access to our selective schools, where grades are a part of that composite score. It also impacts the FAP meetings in terms of understanding the impact, uh, if any, that, um, the services had on students. And so we don't have accurate grades that, that, that has an impact in, in our review of that.
I mean, I, I guess the second part of my question is, so would there be some penalty to the district? In terms of disciplinary action or recourse or something because?
I mean, potentially, so like, for, within the, uh, the things that are related to special education. For example, that could result in compensat- compensatory services findings, which have dollars amounts associated with it. So these are serious.
And Commissioner Reed, also a reminder that we, we are a district that was under a consent decree over, uh, over compliance issues around special education for many years. We, we, just a few years ago got out of that, but yeah, so there's some very grave consequences.
They also put us at risk for an office of OCR.
OCR, Office of Civil Rights Complaints for our students that have 504 plans.
Uh, to, uh, continuing with, um, the operational, um, uh, concerns. Um, so, um, in the area, or sorry, going to financial management, in that, we consider this to be partially met. So the, um, operator did provide, um, information in the form of, uh, bank statements, um, and a, a budget that finance was able to determine, um, uh, shows that they were able to maintain three months of operating funds um, for June and August. Um, July was slightly below, but very close to that amount. Uh, enrollment has continued to have been issued, so they kind of partially met in terms of maintaining the operator fund, um, uh, threshold. But when it comes to enrollment, that continues to lag. Um, so, um, their funded enrollment was for two-hundred-and-eight students. Uh, and so they were projected at two-hundred-and-fifty-six students, so that's a loss of forty-eight students. Um, so that's a significant kind of financial impact. Um, and they've never, um, they've never hit their enrollment targets. So if we look at the history of their enrollment, it's always been significantly below the minimum, um, since they opened. So that's not a new thing that is this year, and it came out of the one year. It's been a consistent kind of challenge, um, uh, for the school. Uh, additionally, the final, um, kind of condition was that they, um, acquire a permanent facility. Uh, in this area, we were also considering this to be partially met, so they have identified St. Ambrose as a, um, St. Ambrose as a potential permanent facility for the school. Um, however, their, the, part of the requirements, um, have been that they were supposed to submit a renovation plan or construction plan, um, for the facility. They have not done that. They were also, uh, to identify within their budget, uh, monies that they were setting aside for the acquisition and renovation, all the work that it took to, um, uh, get a facility ready. Uh, and, um, they, um, had submitted a budget to us in August that didn't contain any reference to a facility. They sent a revised budget on October nineteenth. Um, it was a signi- a significantly revised budget on October, on October nineteenth that identified fifty thousand dollars that was described as for relocation expenses, um, so, um.
They gave you a budget, but they give you a balance sheet?
We received bank statements to show, uh, what funds they had in the, in the bank account.
But they don't, they never given you audited financial statements or balance sheet or income statement?
Uh, all operator schools provide audited financial statements on an annual basis. So they, um, have provided us, uh, financial statements for FY sixteen and seventeen, which were part of last year's renewal review. Um, there is, uh, they've not, the schedule, it just hasn't allowed them to provide an FY eighteen audited budget, because that information is not available.
It's a lagging indicator, so it's always a year behind.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Frank?
Thank you. I, I did want to ask about the facility and understand the nature of the agreement that they signed last year, or I assume there was some agreement. Was it part of the condition of the board that they identify a facility and, and also begin plans for renovation?
Yeah, so the exact requirement were that they procure a facility, that they describe financing, finance, financing plans for the acquisition and renovation of the facility, that they outline plans for construction or renovation, including a timeline and costs, um, that, that must be included in their FY nineteen operator budget. And the monies must be set aside for this purpose, even if a facility is not identified at the time that the budget was due. Um, they were to also, uh, provide written confirmation commitment to curing the facility and to develop an enrollment recruitment plan to help school meet.
What is the enrollment for the school?
It's, uh, two-hundred.
And when you s- you said St. Ambrose, is that the one on Twenty-Fifth Street?
No, this is in West Baltimore.
Okay, so have they submitted any evidence of having any level of site control for that building?
No, not, not of site control, they submitted a letter of intent.
A letter of intent.
Well, and they, right, for themselves, and because of the nature of the agreement, um, they sent me, because of the anonymous backing, they sent me verification that it was in fact an anonymous, I guess, donor, for lack of a better term, who was going to do that, so, sorry.
Just to be clear, because you were talking about something different, so I just want to make sure it's clear for members of the public. Um, and, and our conversations around acquisition of facility and identifying monies for that, they indicated that they had a confidential donor who was willing to donate. Um, and so in order, we said in order for the board to be able to consider it, you need to at least provide affirmative proof to, um, Dr. Santelisus.
And, but we do have some, you say a letter of intent between the school and the owner of the building, or?
No, the letter and intent is from, um, the operator.
Do we have anything from the owner of the building?
Owner of the building.
Nothing from the owner of the building indicates?
Except for the phone call to me.
The phone call, potential funds, but also the site itself?
Yes.
We've seen nothing in writing from the owner?
No.
Okay, thanks.
I just, I'm trying to keep the anonymity agreement, and so that's why, but I'm more than happy to talk offline.
Any other questions? Okay, so our next step is?
So we will be back on November thirteenth. Um, at that time, they will have an opportunity to testify to the board. They also have opportunity between now and November ninth to send you any additional, uh, written materials that they feel is, um, uh, relevant to help you make your decision, as well as any stakeholders. Uh, they can also provide, um, evidence, um, to you, to, to you guys, uh, via email or through, um, nailing it to the board directly. Um, and then on that same night, you will, you will vote.
Any questions?
Would it be possible to have some of those special ed, uh, updates given in our Teaching and Learning Committee meeting prior to, um, the meeting on the thirteenth? Would that be possible?
I think, uh, you, you should get a, um, we have a, we'll get a notebook, or we'll, we'll get more data around this particular school, so you should have it before then, yes.
I'm just really concerned about those young, uh, about those students.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. But for that specific situation, we'll get it, we, we, we will have all this, all of the update that you need.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Brooks.
You, you do have, or you, um, you'll see in the morning, you do have a package that has updates up to today, because the operator submitted additional materials on Friday. Um, so you have a reflection of that and a review of those materials.
Right. Okay, right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did I make it? According to my pen and what I've checked off, we have covered. Did I miss anything? I'm looking at the team here. All right, so I'm going to indicate our upcoming meetings, how's that? Uh, the, the Parent and Community Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, October twenty-fifth in this room at six-thirty. Uh, the, our board forum on the budget, uh, which we mentioned earlier, will be on Thursday, November the first at six P M. here in the boardroom. Teaching and Learning Committee will meet on Monday, which is a, a change in day, Monday, November the fifth, here, three-thirty in the boardroom. The next, uh, executive session for the board will be Tuesday, November thirteenth at three P M. The next public board meeting will be Tuesday, November thirteenth at five P M. Operations Committee will meet on Tuesday, November the twentieth at ten A M. And the Policy Committee will meet on Tuesday, November the twentieth at three-thirty P M. If there are no other, if there's nothing else for the good of the group, or?
Can I say one thing?
Yes, you did a phenomenal job. Yeah, I sure will come back. Thank you to, to all of you and everyone for your patience and your help, and, uh, may I, I will remember this part, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Commissioner Frank and Richardson, I'm going to do it, all in favor? Meeting is adjourned, good night, everyone, thank you.